Good evening. I would like to call the April 9th, 2013 Longmont City Council meeting to order. This is our regular session. Could we please start with a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs?
Present.
Councilmembers Bagley, Finley, Levison, Samori, Santos, Witt. Mayor Coombs, we have a form.
Thank you. Let's stand for a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on the list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or at the final call, public invited to be heard on any of the items at the end of the meeting. So we have minutes to approve from the March 19th. Are there any corrections or additions to be made? Councilmember Samori.
I would move to approve those minutes as is.
All right, let's vote.
Actually, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
I'm sorry. There was one notation that I made on the minutes when we had the Section 10, when we were discussing the legislative actions. I just think we should amend the minute slightly to define by title the purpose of the bill. Was it 102 or 202 that involved the inspections for oil and gas? The other two bills actually state what their purpose are, and since we did take a motion, there's no identifier on the bill. So I would just move that we slightly amend the minute to have that clarification of what that 202 bill was.
Okay.
Thank you.
The amendment is accepted. Let's vote. Okay, pass the seven to zero. Congress, are there any agenda revisions or submissions of documents?
Yes, Mayor Coombs. First of all, we need to pull Item 9J from your consent agenda. It will come back at a future meeting, but there are some revisions that need to be made to that. And then, secondly, we need to add a Longmont Urban Renewal Authority Resolution 2013-03 to general business. And I don't know where you'd like to place that, first, last, or in the middle somewhere, but that needs to be determined.
Let's place it first. Everybody in agreement with placing it first? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we have a proclamation designating April 2013 as Fair Housing Month in Longmont. Accepting this proclamation will be Kathy Fedler, Community Development and Block Grant Coordinator. I'll go ahead and read this. A proclamation designating April 2013 as a fair housing month in Longmont, Colorado, whereas April 2013 marks the 45th anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act in 1968, which affirms the right of every citizen to obtain housing of their choice regardless of race, color, sex, religion, national origin, disability, or family status. And whereas the state of Colorado law also affirms the right of every citizen to obtain housing of their choice regardless of race, color, creed, ancestry, religion, sex, sexual orientation, national origin, disability, marital status, or family status. And whereas these laws prohibit discrimination and harassment in all aspects of housing, including sales and rentals, eviction terms and conditions, mortgage loans and insurance, and land use and zoning are vital to ensuring that Longmont is a welcoming and inclusive community where everyone can belong. Now, therefore, I, Dennis L. Coombs, Mayor, by the virtue of authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim April 2013 as Fair Housing Month in Longmont, and I invite all citizens in the community to be aware of this vital program. So obviously, you're not Kathy Fedler.
I was going to say, Mayor Coombs and Council, I'm not Kathy Fedler, but I am John Clark, and I'm your Community and Neighborhood Resources Supervisor. And I'm pleased to be here tonight to talk about Community and Neighborhood Resources serving as Longmont's Fair Housing Office. An example of our education outreach is illustrated by two trainings that we're providing tomorrow in partnership with the Longmont Police Department on service and companion animals. First training tomorrow is for local service providers that include Boulder County Police Department, Boulder County Housing, Longmont Housing Authority, Boulder Housing Partners, Center for People with Disabilities, the R Center, the In-Between, Sister Carmen, Safe House, and other public agencies. Then in the evening, the second training is with our Landlord Training Alliance that includes a network of up to 200 landlords. We found that these efforts to support fair housing and other topics have been successful in reaching the Longmont community. So I'm going to ask Kathy and Susan Spalding come up and accept the proclamation with me.
All right, thank you, John. Colorado. Actually, I think I'm going to, yeah, I'll do that one first. We have, accepting the proclamation will be Ken Wickland, the City of Longmont Forester, Susan Spalding, Community Resource Specialist, Liz Shrines, and Justin Kinmore from the Precision Felling, Doug Hewitt from 3D Tree Care, Joe Guidance from Helping Hand Contracting, John Robinson from St. Brain Arbor Care, Edward Gobel from Austin Trees, Tobit Shai from Arbor Tree Care, Dustin Brown from Blue River Forestry, Charles Wagner from Cutting Edge Tree Care, John Bylin from Cut Above, and James Young from Bodhi Tree Care, and Chris Reinhold from Reinhold Tree Care. Wow, big group.
Yeah.
They're not all here.
But it's important, yeah, it's important.
Okay, I'll read the proclamation, designating April 20th, 2013, as Arbor Day in Longmont, Colorado, whereas we recognize that trees significantly contribute to enhancing our quality of life, and whereas Arbor Day aims to foster community stewardship among individuals, neighborhoods, associations, schools, nonprofits, businesses, and the city through planting and maintaining trees, and whereas our community focus is committed to improving the environment for the future generations. Now, therefore, I, Dennis L. Coombs, Mayor, by the virtue of authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim April 20th, 2013, as Arbor Day in Longmont, and I encourage our community to celebrate the importance of trees now and all year round. Go ahead and speak.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, Mayor of Council. My name is Ken Wickland. I'm the City Forester with Public Works and Natural Resources. I'm a little biased, but, you know, trees are a very valuable asset for our community. And every year, we have to apply with the National Arbor Day Foundation for something called Tree CDA designation, Tree CDA status. And this has been 33 consecutive years now that we've received this designation, and I think it's been in existence for about 36 years. And there's a number of criteria they have to meet every year. We submit the application annually, and one of them is to have a proclamation, which is done here tonight. Another one is to hold an Arbor Day event. And we've done a lot of different things for Arbor Days. And this year, we're doing something a little bit different again. So we're doing, of course, tree planting. So usually, you think of Arbor Day, you think of tree planting. So we're going to be planting a bunch of trees at Rogers Grove, and it's going to be on April 20th, Saturday, from 9:00 to noon. So it's a public-invited event. We like the people to bring their shovels and help us contribute in trying to, you know, beautify that area. It's going to be actually around the pond, the new pond that we just acquired. So the county used to own that, and now the city's going to maintain that. So we're going to try to help beautify that area a little bit. So that's really exciting. But Arbor Day is not just about plants, it's also about tree care and maintenance. And this is something I'm really excited about, actually. It's a new thing that we kind of started this year, but actually, it started last There's a number of contractors we have in town. We have actually 36 licensed contractors, tree contractors in town. And 3D Tree Care came to Forestry Services last year and says, you know, in honor of Arbor Day, I'd like to do something a little different this year because I'd like to donate a day's worth of time to some family or some household that is in need, that really can't afford to do some tree care operations. I just thought it was a great way to celebrate Arbor Day. And I thought, you know, can we expand on that? Can we maybe do something different next year? So Doug Hewitt and Laura Hewitt, they're the owners of 3D. They started that last year, and this year, it's just kind of evolving and progressing. And we've got a number of talented arborists in town, and therefore, we've kind of sent some things out, and it's kind of blossoming. And to kind of share the update on that, we're going to have Susan Spalding here from Community and Neighborhood Resources, and she'll update you on what's going on.
Thank you, Ken.
I have a special interest in this because not only am I a mediator, but I am also an arborist myself. So it was a perfect marriage. Last year, 3D Tree Care came to our office, and we were able to put them together with somebody who needed tree care work. But beyond that, what I began to notice is so many people started coming to our office saying, I need help with my trees. Code's given me a violation, or my trees are dangerous, and I can't afford the tree work. So Ken and I got together and started this new program. It's called Treasure Our Trees. And all of these wonderful arborists behind us and that you mentioned with the proclamation have all agreed to donate their services for free to residents of Longmont. And I have to tell you, this program is such a tremendous success. The applications aren't due until Friday. We have over 30 applications already, some people needing tree work. So hopefully, we'll be able to continue this in the future, but at least for this year, it's been a wonderful contribution to our community.
Thank you, Susan. Do you guys want to come forward and accept your proclamation? City of Longmont. We have accepting the proclamation designating April 20th, or, excuse me, who's going to be accepting this one? Let's see. Oh, okay, that'd be Bob Penn, Jim Marlin, John Dean, Tom and Karen Hugener. Okay, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Come on down. Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in Longmont, Colorado. A proclamation designating April 2013 as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in Longmont, Colorado, whereas Parkinson's disease is a progressive neurological movement disorder that results in rigidity, tremor, and difficulty with balance and walking. And whereas it is estimated that 1.5 million Americans are currently living with the disease, and whereas the cause of this disease is unknown, the cure has not yet been determined, and the standard treatments are through drug therapy and deep brain stimulation surgery, which do not stop the progression. And whereas increased education and research are needed to help find more effective treatments with less side effects and ultimately a cure for Parkinson's disease. And whereas in addition to the numerous elderly persons affected with Parkinson's disease, a number of young people are diagnosed daily with the disease. And whereas it is important to recognize the effects of Parkinson's disease on the citizens of our city and state so we may gain a better understanding of their needs and bring about greater hope for a cure. Now, therefore, I, Dennis L. Coombs, Mayor, by virtue of authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim April 2013 as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in Longmont, and I invite all the citizens in the community to support those with Parkinson's disease in the hope that a cure will soon be found. So would you like to make a statement?
Well, thank you for taking a moment or two to recognize this disorder. It's actually the second most common neurological condition in the United States behind Alzheimer's. It's more than ALS and MS and muscular dystrophy combined. So we're trying to raise awareness. We're going to be out in the community this Saturday at the Boulder County Fairgrounds at the Farmer's Market, trying to let the community know about what Parkinson's disease is and maybe some of the early symptoms so that we can let people know what's out there and how to get treatment. And really, again, thank you very much for taking a moment to recognize this disorder. It's very common. We need to get more people aware of it. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being here.
One of the doctors, famous in China, who I got to see, deep brain stimulation therapy of Longmont United.
Oh, really? With Dr. Beast there, right?
Yeah.
She's an Asian surgeon. She delivered in here for about a year. She's amazing.
Yeah.
I think you have one more special presentation, Mayor Coombs. That's the proposed modifications to Roosevelt Pavilion.
Okay, you're right.
And Kim Sugar will be presenting that.
Good evening. Tonight, we have a special presentation from one of our residents, Mr. John Thacker, to explain a proposal that he's brought to the city to enhance the Roosevelt Pavilion.
I am a resident of Longmont, have been for about 18 years, and quite frequently walk around the Roosevelt Park quadrangle. And for many years, I've noticed that the pavilion is sort of the source squat in the whole park in terms of how it looks. I always thought it was a little awkward, and many people have said, you know, it's too high, it looks like an airplane hangar, whatever. So six years ago, I took photos of it with the idea that I would try to come up with a solution to the gable ends that would fill them in and give them a more human scale and maybe try to bring visually the look of the building down a little. So in the meantime, I've talked to an engineering firm in Boulder, JBA Engineering, Structural Engineering Company, and they have offered to provide their services, charge for this project, and they've done the engineering for it. Sun Construction, whom I think a lot of you may know already, they do work for the city. They will be the contractor, and they very generously offered their profit and overhead as a contribution. So we have a pretty good little team going of people who are very professional. They've been in the business a long time, both of those firms. And the drawings are complete, as I think maybe you have copies of. And we are ready to go ahead and do the construction after the approval, I hope, of the City Council. We have scheduled a July 29 construction time, sort of tentatively, if we can get everything done, all the kinks worked out, for a five-day period of time to get the trusses up. And I guess that's about it. I'm sure you're going to have some questions about the project. It will be totally privately funded. No funds will be required by the city.
Have any questions? Councilmember Finley?
I don't have any questions, but I think what you've done is an excellent example of how our community comes together to fix things, and I just thank you for what you've done.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Santos?
Hey, Mayor. Kimberly, I have a question for you. Has the Parks and Rec Advisory Board seen this?
Yes, they have.
What was the vote?
They did vote to support the project pending that it met all building inspection permits, which we are still in that process.
How would this, and I don't see Jeff Freezner, how would this affect the ice rink operations? It shouldn't, I've seen the renderings before. I saw this at a coffee with Council, I want to say, late last year. So it shouldn't affect that operation.
It will not.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you. So I just want to make sure, it's kind of hard to see the drawings on the laptop I have at home to work off of. And so the trusses and the hat, well, the trusses would be on all four sides of the structure?
Actually, three sides, east, west, and south.
South, okay. Okay, and then is it going to affect the acoustics? We have, you know, sometimes that's used for bands or parties or whatever. Is it going to make it acoustically better or worse? Because I know that that could, I don't know how that would influence having that extra structure, if it would keep the, more tend to keep the sound in?
No, I can't answer that question. It's fairly open. The web, the steel web numbers are pretty far apart, and then we're proposing a four-inch square screen behind to sort of soften the whole thing up. How that would affect the acoustics, it's hard to say unless you did an analysis of some kind. I understand the acoustics are not that great right now.
Well, I was, I'm hoping whether or not that would facilitate maybe adding some kind of a fabric that would improve the acoustics or something else. Certainly, you'd be able to hang a banner there where previously you may not really have been able to hang a banner. And then what would be the color of the add-on? Would it just be the same color as the roof?
That would be the best, I think, to match the existing color.
And I didn't see that the color was included in the information we got, so thank you.
I thought it was in there somewhere.
Okay.
In the proposal.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'd also like to thank you for your work in coming up with the, I think is a great solution. I just don't see a downside for not doing this project myself. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. So Kimberly, you're looking for direction. So I would move going with the proposal as submitted.
Go ahead, Ken.
Right, and just to follow up, we will continue our process right now, working with engineers and building inspection. And then, secondly, similar to other public-private partnerships that we've done in the parks, we'll bring back an agreement so everybody understands responsibilities and relationships. So that will be coming back.
All right, well, let's vote on whether we agree to give a general direction to proceed. Okay, pass the seven to zero. Thank you. Now it's time for City Manager's remarks. I inadvertently passed you over.
That's fine, Mayor. Mayor, Council, we do have a couple of items, but because of the length of the agenda, we're going to actually push those to the City Manager comment period at the end of the agenda.
Okay, great, thank you. It's time for first call, public invited to be heard. Rich Yale, please come down and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Richard Yale. I reside at 1211 Baker Street, Longmont, Colorado. And we're here tonight to give you a brief overview of a new transportation system that could be online within two years carrying passengers from Longmont to Boulder. This system is very unique in the fact that the designer of the propulsion system is Dr. Williamson, who's here. It's a lightweight vehicle, as you can see from the slide there. And it actually flies, and there's a fin that goes up into the guide rail. It would look a lot like this, and you have your fin inside. And they convert solar energy into hydrogen. All that is done external from the vehicle, and it goes through a hydrogen fuel cell and furnishes electricity to propel it. And it's actually flying inside there. It's, the power goes in to the vehicle, and it, the magnets are in the rail on the sides, are in the module. And it's different from any other system that's out there because of the magnetic field, and as it goes by the magnets, it creates a magnetic field which propels the vehicle and can travel at extraordinarily high speeds. Probably empty, that car could go 300 miles an hour. It takes no more energy to cruise at 150 than it would be to run an egg beater in your kitchen. And so we're using almost all the energy that goes into propelling that is generated by solar, and so it's completely clean energy. We're not, we are essentially at net zero then on the electrical grid line. This is a car, and that gives you a good view of the fin that goes up into it. It's like a T-bar, and when you're not levitated, it actually rests on it, so it's, it can't fall through or anything. And the control system is the same computer program that stabilizes a B-2 bomber and keeps it stable, so you're not going to get sway in the car on it. You see, they look like little luxury cars, and the uniqueness about this And the uniqueness about this program is that it's a private-public partnership and that all that Skytran needs is the right-ofways, like the Meridian on 119. And the, then they, it's funded by, it'll be funded, it'll be a private stock company.
Wrap it up pretty quick, is there anything?
All right. Okay, it's point-to-point travel, so that if you...
Do you have to continue with Paul Williamson? Sorry, we do have a three minute.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, for having us here today. We're looking at this opportunity to bring a hydrogen-powered monorail system that works on magnetic levitation to Colorado. It was a research project that I had with the Department of Transportation out of Washington, DC, when I was at the University of Montana. And now that I moved back to Colorado, I moved, once I moved this industry here. And these are the different transportation opportunities that it addresses in the slide that you have before you. And where we're going with it is a much cheaper type of transportation per mile than anything that is presently available. The biggest thing that we're working on right now is the first, what we call city connector between Longmont and Boulder. I'm working with CDOT to attain the right-ofway. This gives you a little bit of an example of what it will look like with the portals and stations that we have and how we're going to operate this system. We can also see the map there that gives you the different portal sites from the side of 287 on down to 36 at the portal's end point. The next thing that I want to, whoop. Well, I don't have it, so I'll just talk about it. I'm going to give to you, and you have in front of you, a proposal for establishing an intergovernmental agreement for the Colorado Cities Connector Authority. This agreement is something that we would like to enter into with Longmont and Boulder as we put this together. And we see this is the first phase of the Skytran project and deploying it here. And also establishing the headquarters here in the Longmont area. The initial phase will produce about 50 jobs as we go through the testing and the assembly plant, and eventually be up to about 500 employees. So I thank you for your time this evening and look forward to future work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, we've got Michael Markell. Markell, excuse me.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. It's Michael Markell. And it's 8165 North 73rd Street in Longmont. And I have an item that's on the consent agenda. It's on 9F. And I didn't know if anybody would have any questions, so it's an annexation request. And if anybody would have any questions of that for me, I'd be happy to answer them. And I'll just sit down.
Well, normally, this time, you can, we're not supposed to be a dialogue back and forth and public invited to be heard.
Oh, okay.
But thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Next up is Brad Jolly.
Brad Jolly, 2213 Spinnaker Circle, Longmont. And with all due respect to my friend, Mr. Yale, I'm not sure that the idea of being able to get to Boulder at 300 miles an hour is all that appealing. Came here tonight to talk about the Twin Peaks Mall situation. The purpose of eminent domain is to prevent a single person from holding up a public project where location is critical, such as a highway, for example. It is not the purpose of eminent domain to give a developer an advantage over a legitimate business owner. There's nothing special in the Twin Peaks Mall location that makes it such that somebody couldn't develop a mall elsewhere. You and I may or may not like the rights that Dillard's has, but they're obviously quite valuable. It is not up to city council to determine that value, especially when the current owner had the opportunity to negotiate before buying the mall and to factor those costs into the purchase prices they paid for the mall. It sets a terrible agreement to have city council take sides in business negotiations. This is also splitting the community. Just about 100% of the people that I know and that I read in the paper agree that redeveloping the mall is a good thing. Nobody disagrees with that. But the approach you're taking with eminent domain is really angering a lot of people. And if you look in the comments section on the Times Call website, you'll see that. Finally, even if you do win this by forcing eminent domain upon Dillard's, you will lose in the long run, once people realize that the Longmont City Council does not respect the legitimate business rights of property owners. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Mayor Coombs and members of city council. I'm here as the president of the Friends of the Longmont Museum to speak on behalf of the issue you have before you, the offer by our major benefactor, Lila Stewart, to offer up a significant sum of money for, in return for the city kicking in a little bit more. And I'll let Wes go over the details with you. I just want to throw my support behind this and let you know that we're very much in hopes that this will move forward. Thank you.
Could you give us your address for?
Yeah, I'm not inviting you over. No, yes, 1631 Harlequin Drive.
All right, thank you.
Kay Fissinger, 2199 Creek Side Drive. Good evening, council. And yes, I'm still around and I'm still paying attention. Tonight, I want to inform you and the public about an exciting all-day conference in Longmont on Saturday, April 27. The conference is being sponsored by Our Health, Our Future, Our Longmont, the organization that brought the ban on hydraulic fracturing to Longmont. We are calling it Be Fracture: What You Don't Know May Well Hurt You. And yes, those plays on words were definitely intended. Did I say play? That's an inside baseball joke. The conference will be held at the Longmont Plaza Center off Kenkrat Boulevard and behind the Best Western Plus Plaza Hotel. It will be from 9:00 AM until 5:00 PM. The registration fee is $38 and includes all events, a buffet luncheon, early, mid-morning, and mid-afternoon snacks. Our keynote speaker is the renowned Dr. Anthony Ingraffia, who along with Professor Howarth, produced the peer-reviewed Cornell Study in April of 2011. It reveals that the unconventional retrieving of natural gas through fracking and horizontal drilling likely emits more greenhouse gas pollution into the atmosphere during the life cycle than does coal. Dr. Ingraffia is also an expert, award-winning engineer on the mechanics of fracking, and he once worked for the oil and gas industry. Dr. Jeffrey Tyne, author and co-author of over 50 peer-reviewed scientific papers, will speak to the complexities of research and the influence of industry and government in academic settings. There will be breakout sessions on the health ramifications on air and water from fracking and on the economic ramifications of fracking. The day will conclude with a concert by none other than Hazel Miller. We invite the mayor, the council, city staff, along with our fellow members of the community to attend. We are also reaching out to communities along the front range to come to Longmont and hear all you need to know but we're afraid to ask about unconventional drilling for natural gas and oil using hydraulic fracturing. Registrations are being taken at Our Longmont's website, www.ourlongmont.org. Click on the Be Fracture event link and then on register. And I hope to see all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. I think that's all we have for public invited to be heard. So it's time to consent agenda.
Mayor Coombs, you have no second reading items, so consent agenda. Items are 9A is ordinance 2013-08, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Longmont Enterprise Wastewater Revenue Bonds. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for April 23. Item 9B is ordinance 2013-09, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the City of Longmont to lease the following parcels of real property at Vance brand Municipal Airport. Hangar parcel H30 to Arnold and Stephen Pecker, H31 to James D. Douglas, H32 to William Mansfield, H35 to Michael L. Kastner, H36 to Dan Berry, H38 to Douglas Jackson, H39 to William F. Hannahhan, H40 to Douglas J. Sheffield, and H41 to William G. Copely. The public hearing and second reading is scheduled for April 23, 2013. Item 9C is ordinance 2013-10, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the City of Longmont to lease portions of Alta Park and the Meadow Ridge property to Growing Gardens of Boulder County. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for April 23. Item 9D is ordinance 2013-11, a bill for an ordinance amending Title 15, Appendix E7 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Adequate School Capacity between the City of Longmont and the St. Green Valley School District RE1J. The public hearing and second reading of this ordinance is scheduled for April 23. Item 9E is ordinance 2013-12, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of a five-foot-by-eight-foot electrical easement located between Lot 17 and 18 in Wallace Edition, Fourth filing. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for April 23. Item 9F is Resolution R. 2013-28, finding that the petition for annexation of certain parcels of land located in Boulder County, State of Colorado, known as the North Star Annexation, which is generally located north of Plateau Road and east of Mount Audubon Drive, substantially complies with the Colorado Revised Statute, Section 3112-107-1. Item 9G is Resolution 2013-29, finding that the petition for annexation of a parcel of land located in Boulder County, State of Colorado, known as the Quail Commercial Center Annexation, which is generally located north of Quail Road and east of Main Street, substantially complies with the Colorado Revised Statute, Section 3112-107-1. Item 9H is Resolution 2013-30, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Longmont Downtown Development Authority for support and services. Item 9I is a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Longmont Housing Authority for repair of the elevator at the Suites. 9J has been pulled from the agenda. Item 9K is Resolution 2013-33, approving a grant from the Colorado Department of Wildlife to enhance the shooting range. And item 9L is Resolution 2013-34, approving a grant from the Colorado Department of Transportation for the 2013 E Citation Program. And staff does not have any items that need to be pulled at this point.
Councilmember Levinson?
I'd like to pull 9A, please.
Councilmember Santos?
Is there no others? I'd like, is Mr. Markell still here? Okay, great. Then I'd like to pull 9F.
Councilmember Santos?
Come here, I would like to move the consent agenda minus 9A and F.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, it passes seven to zero.
9A was the issuance of the Longmont Enterprise Wastewater Revenue Bonds. Jim Goldblum will answer your questions.
I thought we might have bond counsel here tonight, but probably on second reading.
That's correct, they will be here. Bond counsel and financial advisor will both be here on the 23rd.
So I just have a question regarding the marketability of these bonds should Congress and vote away the tax-exempt status of the interest on the bonds for the bondholders.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, we, these bonds are, we haven't got a rating yet, but we expect to get a very strong rating on it. We'll be talking to the rating agencies in two days. And we'll be able to return to you probably at the next regular meeting electioneering results of that. But we have discussed whether that would have any significant impact if there would be the change, these become taxable bonds. And of course, it would certainly increase the interest rates and depending on the rating, it could be anywhere up to 100 basis points or less. But we do believe that still is well within what's, given the type of rates that we're seeing today for non-taxable bonds, that's certainly well within what the sewer fund is projecting for its proformers and coverage.
I just pulled the item to also highlight for members of the public to let them know that the fact that as part of the review of tax code and this kind of tax expenditure is on the chopping block. So that when you think about your tax, well, not your taxes, but the revenue that you pay to pay back these bonds coming through your, the enterprise fund and the rates that you pay through the utility, that this is going to increase the cost of the bonds. And so I would just ask everybody out there in the audience and TV land to contact your, the senators and congressmen in our district, the state of Colorado, even the whole congressional delegation, and let them know to preserve the tax-exempt status of the interest on municipal bonds. So, and if you could find, if you could get bond counsel to give us, you know, a rough number, I mean, you know, if it's going to cost us $100,000 more money, certainly the analysis I've read is that it's going to make these kind of municipal bonds a lot less attractive for investors.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, we do think certainly they'll be less attractive. I'm not sure that they're not still going to be pretty good investment opportunities. We will not have a problem selling them. But we can bring you back a number, actually did that for the, the CLP that we were working on, figured that differential, but we didn't do it for this one, but we'll have it for you at the next meeting.
All right. Well, my information is that even if this bond issue passes and the bonds are issued, that the change in the tax law would be retroactive to any municipal bonds even issued in the past. So I just wanted to throw that out there to let people know that, you know, what matters with tax reform matters down at this municipal level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kay Bryan? Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Mr. Markell?
No, we have, no, no. I'm going to move it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. No, no, why move it then, council member?
I'll second it.
Okay, let's vote on 9A. Passes seven to zero.
Your next item is Resolution 2013-28, and Don Burchett is here from staff to address questions.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Mr. Markell? I just jumped the gun here a little bit. I just felt bad for you when you were up here. We kind of shut you down. Now's the right time.
So, tonight, just to be clear, in our packet, it says approval of the resolution is appropriate unless one or more of the review criteria are not met. And it also says that our discretion at this stage of the annexation review is limited to determining whether or not it will go forward. It's simple. However, you came all the way down here.
Okay.
And so it also says that we're, the proposal would annex approximately 40 acres of land with R1 residential zoning for approximately 64 single-family dwellings. We have a long night. My question is, what's going to happen there if all goes according to your plan?
As far as how does the plan look?
Yeah, you came down here. I just wanted to make...
Okay, so we're annexing, you know, within the comprehensive plan on the very southwest corner. And we're going to annex 40 acres of property. And it's going to be 64 lots. And it had a two-stage process that it needed to go through. It needed to go through the county commissioners first, which it has gone through the county commissioners and has been approved by them. And then it's going to go through the Longmont, you know, process. And we're hoping to be approved and be able to build a quality subdivision.
No further questions, thank you.
Okay.
I would move that we pass Resolution 2013-28.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, it passes... Okay, it passes seven to zero. This is going to be a long night. Should we take like a five-minute break now? Okay, we'll do a 10-minute break right now, and then we'll start in the general business All right, let's bring the meeting back to order. Everybody, please take your seats. And under general business, we're going to put item 4A up front. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not mistaken, we need to adjourn.
Oh.
That's right. We do. Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn as the Longmont City Council and convene as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, it passes seven to zero.
Chairman Coombs, the first item is on your Longmont Urban Renewal Authority meeting is the Resolution LURA 2013-03, which is a resolution of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority authorizing the acquisition of certain real property located within the Twin Peaks Mall area, urban renewal area. And Brad Power is here to make the presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Coombs. Members of the authority, I'm Brad Power, and I serve as the Executive Director of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority. And I've been up in front of you on a couple of other occasions related to the redevelopment of Twin Peaks Mall, and we have another occasion tonight that is of fairly major significance. The previous occasions, obviously, were the adoption of the amended urban renewal plan for this project in October of last year, and then the approval of the redevelopment agreement between the city, the urban renewal authority, the Twin Peaks Mall, Twin Peaks Metropolitan District, and Newmark Merrill earlier this year in January. Tonight, you have another major decision point. In the interest of providing you as much detail and as much detail to the community in order for you to make the best assessment on how to proceed with this project, this evening, we and Newmark Merrill are going to share previously unreleased details related to the negotiations between Newmark Merrill and Dillard's regarding the Twin Peaks Mall project. What we're going to talk about tonight and summarize is the results of several months of negotiations that took place between Dillard's and Newmark Merrill. Late last year, at your suggestion and also at our, at our suggestion, senior city staff became involved in facilitating the discussions between the two parties. We were obviously informed of the, of the details of the exchanges between the two entities, but I want to make sure that you and the community understand that the explicit terms that were being negotiated were traded between the two parties, and we were privy to them, but we were not guiding them or making any assessments of those specific terms. During that time, LURA commissioned an appraisal of the value of the real estate interests of Dillard's on the site. And in, in the interest, again, of providing as much detail, again, to you and the community as possible, we can report this evening for the first time that that appraisal, which was dated as effective of late November of 2012, found an appraised value of the site and the real estate interests of Dillard's of $3,030,000. Recent focus, in the last month or so, was on the proposal by Newmark Merrill to Dillard's that would enable Dillard's to choose from two different options. The first option was an option that would have Dillard's remain part of the property and part of the long-term redevelopment scenario for the future. So they would continue to operate during construction, and they would have the option either after this construction is finished and the project is open, to make one of two decisions, whether or not to stay long-term and commit to the project, or take an opt-out clause and leave the project and leave the community. Alan Ginsborg will provide very explicit details on the nature of that proposal, following my remarks. The other offer that was made was an all-cash offer for Dillard's to essentially leave the market and cede the property for a price to Newmark Merrill. In late March, we can report to you that Dillard's declined the terms of the first option. They declined to undertake the option that would have them stay through the construction period and make a choice about the long-term commitment to the project following the grand opening. As far as the cash offer is concerned that Newmark Merrill made following the rejection of the first option, Newmark Merrill requested that Dillard's respond to that cash offer by April 2nd, and as of this evening, there has been no communication back from Dillard's about that cash offer. Newmark Merrill has concluded that negotiations from this point forward in terms of trying to go in different directions are unlikely to bear fruit, especially as it relates to trying to implement the project according to the timelines that we have in our redevelopment agreement with, with Newmark Merrill. So they're considering, they're asking you to consider the resolution that's before you this evening to authorize the use of eminent domain relative to the Dillard's real estate interests on the property or on the site. Obviously, consideration of this request is very serious, and it's obviously something that none of us want to be in a position to do. But that is, again, based on the nature of the interpretation of where the negotiations stand now, we're essentially at a period of inactivity and lack of communication in moving forward in terms of a negotiated outcome. The Twin Peaks Mall or renewal plan and the elimination, elimination of the blighted conditions of the site is one of the community's highest priorities. I think that goes without saying, it was actually referred to earlier in one of the public comments. Eighty-two percent of the community, in our most recent community satisfaction survey, indicated that, that folks were either very supportive, somewhat supportive of redeveloping and using public funds to redevelop areas such as Twin Peaks Mall. Alan Ginsborg and Brad Pearl, two principals from Newmark Merrill, are here, and as I said earlier, they will characterize in more specific and explicit details the characterization of the negotiation process that was gone through with, with Dillard's. But before I turn it over to Mr. Ginsborg, I wanted to highlight a couple of things that we've heard in, in some of the community dialogue over the course of the last week that will hopefully provide some, some clarification to at least a couple of things that we've seen. First is if eminent domain is required, we would be, LURA would be required to deposit sufficient funds with the court that would enable the process to start. That would actually be funded initially by Newmark Merrill, so they would provide the capital and the cash to provide that, that guarantee to the court. Now, it is, it is true that when the, the value would ultimately be settled through an eminent domain action, that is what we have been referring to as TIF eligible or eligible for reimbursement through the, the public investment. I would point out that our redevelopment agreement with Newmark Merrill is capped at a number of $27.5 million, which would be the contribution, maximum contribution under the current agreement between the city and the developer. Newmark Merrill and Alan can go into more detail on this, they've indicated that they've found, they've determined that approximately $32 million of the project cost would be eligible for reimbursement. So again, you have a delta between the 27.5 and the 32. Again, our redevelopment agreement as it stands now is that the 27.5 would be the maximum fundable amount of tax income financing that would be dedicated to the project. The second issue I wanted to address, which one of the things that we've seen in some of the, the public commentary, is there's been a lot of discussion about can't you just work around Dillard's? Can't you just leave their store in place, leave their parking lot in place, and just do the project around them? That's not possible. In earlier discussions, we've been talking about these, these contracts known as reciprocal easement agreements. And those are things that have been in place from day one in terms of how these shopping centers operate, and it gives the, especially the department store anchors, a lot of control and very explicit control over changes in properties. So their, their approval rights on the site extend beyond their real estate. It extends to the real estate that will be occupied and redeveloped by Newmark Merrill, and that's one of the issues that we obviously have to confront in terms of making, having the ability to have the project go forward. So it is not possible, possible, it's not practically possible, it's not legally possible for the developer to literally work around the existing Dillard's store. The final thing I wanted to say is, is I think, and Harold can chime in during the discussion, is, and I referred to it before, I think there's been a lot of sentiment about just encourage more discussion, more negotiations between the two parties. I'm not sure that that would bear fruit, especially as it relates, again, to the timelines that have been established in our redevelopment agreement. So that's largely what brings us to the difficult and major discussion that you will be having this evening. So before I turn it over to Mr. Ginsborg, I would just say that in addition to our staff team, the LURA special counsel, who is Robert Duncan, is here this evening, and he can go through details with you and answer any questions you may have as it relates to either the resolution that is before you or the eminent domain process as it would relate to this project. So unless Harold has any comments, which it doesn't appear that he does, I would like to introduce Alan Ginsborg of Newmark Merrill.
Thank you, Brad.
Some water, just in case. Well, thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk again, and I appreciate that very much, Chairman Coombs, and members of the Urban Renewal Authority Board. I'd like to give you an update on the status of our project, and to begin that, I'd like to have my partner Brad come up, Brad Pearl, and share with you exactly where we're at with Regal Cinemas, because Brad has been conducting those negotiations. So that'll introduce Brad, and then I'll come back in just a minute.
Do I need to introduce myself, or?
No.
All right. Well, Brad Pearl, Newmark Merrill Company. Um, Regal, I've been working with them on an expedited basis. We started negotiations about 60 days ago to negotiate a lease from Ground Net. It's about 180-page lease. We are down to, we were supposed to have a call today where we'd actually finish off the last three minor points, and we would have execution copies. So we're actually at a point where, because I had a plane flight delayed today, I flew into town today, we were supposed to finish off today, I'll finish it off tomorrow. So we will have a finished lease ready to sign by, for sure, by the end of the week, but probably tomorrow. So they've been actually a pleasure to work with, and they're going to be building a state-of-the-art movie theater, 12 screens, or we'll be building it for them, and I'm very excited to welcome them to the town. Welcome a new version of them to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. It's great news.
Yeah, and then just in terms of the agreements that we've entered into with the city and as a part of our assistance agreement, we've now have a completely binding agreement for a new large-format club warehouse to locate here, and they are spending quite a bit of money right now on their own plans. So we're very comfortable, we had another call with them yesterday to ask them about their interest in timing to open this location, and they said, well, can you do it this year? They are that motivated to open a store to serve this community, so that has gone along very well, and we are finalizing the lease with a natural grocer, which is the other commitment that's in our agreement there for our assistance package. So I just want to report back to you that we are making great progress on, on those things that everybody's asked us to do. You know, they're the fundamental targets that you requested from us, and they're also the very same ones that your community told us they wanted during all of our rather extensive outreach last year. So I feel like we're able to bring together now a package that fits your desires and requests on us, and also what your community has said they'd like to see. So we're getting pretty excited about this. From my perspective, these anchors are the ideal anchors that'll help me to attract national, local restaurants, boutiques, merchants, and basically create a vibrant project that's going to remain vibrant here in Longmont for years to come into the future, and I'm very confident of that with this assortment of tenant mix. And, you know, just as an aside, a part of that tenant mix in my mind from the day we took the project on was that Dillard's would continue to operate. And in fact, just a clarification of what Brad Power was saying earlier, Dillard's and all of our plans remains in the exact location so that they can operate their building. So we certainly have planned to work, physically work around Dillard's to accommodate them, and I'll go into some more detail about that. The challenge is become, they have agreements that prevent us from moving forward, and so, but our desire has always been and still continues to be to have Dillard operate, Dillard's operate their store here. So when I last spoke to you, I talked about the importance of timing to the success of our efforts to redevelop the Twin Peaks Mall. You know, the current economic stability, low interest rates and retailer interest, you know, they've all converged at the same moment in time right now. And in my experience, this opportunity, this window of opportunity doesn't stay open for long. Things change in the economy, you know, retailers right now are interested in this project in opening their stores next year before the holidays. And we are, are fast approaching a, a point of no return where that won't become possible. We've submitted our drawings to the city staff for entitlements, and the, and that's all in process right now. So we're doing all we know how to, and your staff's working very diligently to review those things right now. So it's possible at the point we're at now. You know, the, you know, really what I'm here to ask you to do tonight is, you know, to ensure that the long-term and long-overdue redevelopment of Twin Peaks Mall can be completed in the timeframe that you all have requested us to, and that our retailers want it to be open in. Specifically, I'm asking you to authorize the use of your power of eminent domain to acquire the Dillard's property. We've always wanted Dillard's in the project, however, Dillard's has the recorded covenant that Brad Power mentioned earlier, and that really prevents us from making even the most minor changes to the, you know, like remodeling a parking lot or even the exterior of the building. Forget moving buildings around or demolition or any of those things. In fact, we can't even replat the property without their approval. We can't, we can't find, attain the final entitlement or approvals from the city without their cooperation. And it's all because these covenants exist that were entered in two years ago when the mall was clearly in a point of desperation to attract an anchor department store. You know, simply stated, their covenants an embargo against the redevelopment of Twin Peaks Mall into anything that is significantly different to the existing mall, which is now virtually vacant. Even if the mall shuts completely, and I see that being the trajectory it's on here in, in, in the short term, this covenant will not allow us to change the existing mall without Dillard's sole and absolute approval. So if the situation exists as it is and will exist into the future if, if this isn't resolved. I've been present in all your prior meetings where different members of this Urban Renewal Authority have very reasonably asked us to look at this as an absolute last resort, and I look at it the same way. It's fraught with hazard for us. It's, we want them to operate a store here, we're not angling to want to buy their real estate. We really want to be able to move forward in this project in a holistic way, and ideally we like to retain Dillard's as an operator and a part of the project. Now, normally, I would not share the details of our economic proposals that we make because it, it tends to create a competitive environment for us with future retailers who might be interested in the project and, and can compromise some of the information that they may have that, that allows them to, to negotiate with us in a different way. But, you know, I want you to have every bit of information you can so you can completely evaluate whether exercising your power of eminent domain under state law is now appropriate. At the beginning of two, so I'm going to go through a sequence of events now so that you know, and, and I won't go all the way back to my first conversations with Dillard's, which occurred in 2010 when Panatoni owned the mall and we managed it. But these conversations have been ongoing for some time. You know, at the beginning of 2012, we worked with Dillard's to create a site plan that would retain them as a cornerstone of our new project, and also to meet the needs of the new retailers that we anticipated would want to locate in this new project. All the plans have always included Dillard's building in the location it is in. We've had no plan to relocate Dillard's or change their, change the footprint of their building in any way. Last year, Dillard's ultimately decided that they did not want to locate in an open-air project. So they, they basically said, we're not interested in proceeding in the project. As a result, they said, okay, well then I guess we need to buy your property, and they said, okay, sure, and they asked for construction documents, and they sent us their internal construction documents so we could evaluate the future utility of the building and make them an offer. building and make them an offer. I made a purchase offer to, for the Dillard's property last March for $2,350,000, which is about 85% more than what we paid per square foot for the land beneath the mall on a land basis, and 37% more based on what we paid on the building's per-square-foot price that we purchased the mall at. Dillard's chose not to counter our offer, saying they had no interest in it whatsoever. For the next several months, I attempted to work with Dillard's to see, one, could we get a counterproposal from them, because, you know, in my 30 years, countering my own offers has never been in my negotiating skill. It's been something that we just, you don't do. It doesn't make sense as a person trying to accomplish a transaction. You know, and we tried to get some meaningful direction from Dillard's. Basically, what I was told with it was that they had no interest in the price we had offered, and that most likely, they would like to convert the store to one of their closeout concepts, perhaps, if we built an open-air mall, and then they chose just not to engage in any further discussion. And that occurred middle of last year. In December, I countered my own offer, I broke my own experience of 30 years, and said, you know, we got to, anything we can do to move this thing along, we're going to do. And I received some encouragement from the staff and others to do that. We increased the price by 21%, the price we had offered them, to $2,850,000, in the hope that that would really motivate them to send us a counterproposal. And as you know, the appraised value for the property came in at $3 million. I, based on the market data and the price that we paid for the property, which really defines what it's worth, didn't think that $2,850,000 was warranted, but we also thought, you know, we want to get this to the finish line, if this will get us there, the sooner the better, great. And I was really feeling the time pressure also from our new anchor tenants, who at the end of last year were telling me they want to be open for '14, and I know what that looks like in terms of what we have to accomplish, what your staff has to to make that happen. So even though this was a lot higher price than our acquisition price, I really thought this would start to move our negotiations forward. We didn't get a response to that offer either, and then in January, Dillard's changed real estate directors, which I hope could really lead us to a mutual agreement. I flew to Little Rock, I met with Bill Dillard, who's the chairman of the company, and obviously a descendant of founders, and then with Chris Johnson, who's their new real estate director. Bill told me that, you know, they had now changed their mind, and we're open to operating a store in the project. And I was, you know, pleased, I mean, I was, you know, after spending, actually, my plane got delayed, and it was the best day and a half I ever spent in Little Rock, I thought, okay, these guys want to operate a store here, and that's what we want, we think they're a great merchant, and they're good for your community. So I began working diligently with my partner Brad and Sandy to craft a proposal that would allow them to continue to operate. We made a proposal to Dillard's in February, we traded some ideas, but we really weren't able to make substantive progress, and that's when your staff became involved with sort of monitoring, monitoring the process to see if they could help keep it on track. The time pressure to resolve the issue, really, to meet the needs of these new retailers, really began to get critical then, and I think I even came to you and said, you know, April 1st, I've got to know whether we're going to be able to move forward or not. And so at the end of March, we modified our proposal. Again, we're sort of shooting in the dark, but we were trying to accommodate Dillard's here in terms of operating, and to give them an opportunity to test drive the existing store. And we said to them, you know, we'll invest over, you know, at least a million dollars, maybe more, remodel your storefront, leave your store in our site plans, which are public record, and some of you have seen, Dillard's is today at the very back end of a dead mall, which will soon be more vacant than it is today, I guarantee you, because it's, I know some of the tenants are going to be closing. And the result is, they're buried behind the mall. We offered them opportunity to retain their building, we put a brand-new storefront on it at our expense, which is where the million dollars comes from, potentially, and we would allow, and we would not charge them the increased costs of operating the common area of the shopping center. They have a very, very low rate from way back when, and we told them that for two years, we wouldn't increase that cost, we give them an opportunity just to test drive this location and see how it worked for them. And then we said, if at the end of two years, you don't think that the success of this project is helping you to improve your business, and in fact, you want to close this store, we'll buy it from you for $4 million. And that was our offer. We thought that covered every, every possible scenario that they would like. And basically, that, you know, that was a 70% premium now over what we initially offered Dillard's. And all the while, we knew we were taking the risk that Dillard's might convert the store to a closeout store, we had no way to know if we could prevent that, there's no way to prevent them from doing that, or just mothball it. I've seen that happen with retailers, too. So it was really quite a bit of risk for us, and then also not knowing whether the use would become something incompatible with a shopping center. But we were willing to stick our neck out and try to make that happen to get this moving, and to avoid the discussion we're having tonight, which we take very seriously, and I know you do. So that's kind of where we find ourselves. I think that the opportunity we've presented Dillard's to operate in this project with a brand-new field of parking and co-tenants on all sides of them that would drive new traffic to their store, as opposed to their current condition of a vacant, nearly vacant mall, I think we've offered them a very strong scenario there as a retailer, and I'm an expert in few things in life, I understand retailing quite well, and I know that visibility, access, and parking drive retailer sales, as long as, as well as co-tenancy. So my partners Brad and Sandy had several calls with Chris Johnson at Dillard's last month. In Brad's final call with Chris on the 27th of March, Chris told him that Dillard's had basically, once again, decided they didn't want to remain in the redeveloped project, and were only, were only interested in selling the store for $5 million. So that sort of, we went full circle again, and back to just, you know, we just want you to buy this store. And that, by the way, is $600,000 more than they told us they wanted in December. So the real estate market must be recovering quickly. Chris explained that Bill did not want to be next door to a theater, which has been on our plans from day one. There's been a movie theater adjacent to Dillard's on every plan we've created. We made them a final offer to purchase the store. After receiving that news, we said, okay, let's make them another final offer to purchase the store, and on March 28th, we offered them $3.5 million, which is a 50% premium over our original offer, and that was for a cash close now. And they've yet to respond to any of those calls, as Brad Power said earlier. So at this point, the redevelopment of Twin Peaks Mall is really being held hostage to Dillard's covenants and their parcel configuration. Fact is, as it stands today, this almost vacant mall is really blighted, I mean, it is what urban renewal is for. We were able to negotiate a 180-page lease with Regal Theaters in two months' time, and they know that if there's any way to come to terms with Dillard's, we would be able to figure that out. We've all, as a team, been doing this for a very long time. Essentially, we offered Dillard's what they wanted a month ago, when they said they wanted to continue to operate, and some of the parameters they gave us verbally, and to remain a part of the project at no cost, and pay them a premium in the future if they decided it didn't work out for them. At this point, they run us into overtime, and your use of eminent domain is our last play to meet the timelines imposed on us, both by the agreements we have with you, and also by the desires of the retailers that are interested in locating here. The use of eminent domain as it relates to the Dillard's property is something that the city of Longmont obviously takes very seriously, and as I said before, so do we. It's not something we desired to do throughout the course of our work here. But one property owner in a large-scale project controls the destiny of the entire project that has, I believe, widespread community support. It makes sense for the Urban Renewal Authority to step in to provide a solution that is really in the community's best interest, and I know that's the evaluation you have to make tonight, is whether this is in the community's best interest. Now, state law, this is the reason, I believe, state law grants urban renewal authorities the power of eminent domain, is to deal with a holdout property owner in the situation. This situation's occurred in Colorado several times in the past with department stores in other cities, like in Denver, University Hills Mall, and Broadway Marketplace, in Lakewood at their city center, and Belmar projects in Lakewood that are new projects, and in Westminster at the Westminster Mall. It's been invoked then to resolve inaction from a single property owner. So it's not cutting new territory, so to speak, or new ground. So Twin Peaks, as you know, has been declining for many years, and it's soon going to be vacant. I really believe this is the time you have to act. I urge you to vote in favor of using your power of eminent domain to help us break this deadlock, and assure you that if at any time during condemnation proceedings, Dillard's changes course again, we're still very open to an alternate resolution that would avoid a final condemnation proceeding. We very much would like to find a way to keep them in the project if we can. So thanks for your time, and I know you may have questions, and certainly free to ask me questions, or Brad, or anything else, so thank you.
Okay, I guess I'd like to start. I, you know, I was elected to lead, and when I was campaigning, you know, I went to 15 different precincts and knocked on doors, so I got firsthand, I would ask people that, what was their biggest concern, and eight out of 10 people said, redeveloping the mall. So I'm convinced you've done everything possible to make this thing happen, and if we have to make a hard decision as a leader, I know I can make that hard decision. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Harold and Brad, when you, when we started facilitating meetings between New Mark Merrill and Dillard's, so you guys were in pretty close contact between, between the two?
Correct. We were having discussions with both parties.
When's the last time we've heard from Dillard's?
The last time was March...
Around mid-March.
Mid-March?
Mid-March. To give council a sense of the discussions, as you all may remember, we set some timelines in place for both, at the time, we were dealing with both Regal in terms of coming to some conclusion to the discussions, and we were also dealing with Dillard's. And we established two separate timelines. The timeline for Regal in terms of coming to a solution was March 15th, the timeline for Dillard's was the end of February 1st of March, and that was a mutually agreeable timeline. Go ahead.
Just recalling another piece of the timeline, we did talk to, or heard from, Mr. Chris Johnson just prior to the offer, actually after the offer that was made for that first option, as Alan described it, the trial run option. We heard back from him that he thought that that was, that was a positive development, and he would take it to their decision-makers. That was the last time.
That was the last communication, so I wanted to reference the timelines as we're moving through it. The last communication was after the, what I will call the hybrid option, where it was really an attempt to maintain Dillard's in Longmont, but at the same time, gave them the ability, gave a buyout clause in the process. That was the last time we discussed the issue. As new information presented itself, Brad and I made several attempts to get in touch with Mr. Johnson, again, trying to facilitate the discussion, and as of this meeting, we have not had a return call. Thank you.
Councilmembers tomorrow.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Beyond what New Mark Merrill has offered, I know that the city had offered to give some incentives to Dillard's to stay and operate in the city. Can you quantify those incentives for us?
Correct. As part of that, again, I'll refer to it as a hybrid option, Mr. Ginsburg referenced the common area maintenance charges. That was actually an area where in the discussions, the city engaged and was, and put up a number of 560, a maximum of $560,000 to help offset those common area maintenance charges, so that essentially, Dillard's could remain in the location at their existing rate.
So if I do just a rough calculation of the last offer made, including the incentives from the city, Dillard's would have gotten close to $6 million for that property. A, the million dollars that was going to be done for the improvement of the facade entrance parking, the $4 million buyout if they were to choose to sell out after two years, and the $560,000 in incentives to stay to offset some of the costs that they would have incurred. And they still refused that.
You asking me?
Well, all of you.
Yeah, I think the lack of response that we've received, knowing that this is imminent and this discussion's occurring, and the timetables we've established previously, leads me to the conclusion that they don't have interest in it, but I can't say they've rejected it.
Okay, so in your best guess, what do you think it would take if you were able to come up with a proposal that would meet their needs? What would it be? If you had to take a guess?
Well, they, so far, over the last three months, they've said that $5 million is the amount of money they'd like for the property.
Period.
Period, yeah. And that, that's from December, it ran up by $600,000.
So that would indicate that they don't have really any interest in operating in Longmont if all they want to do is sell it for $5 million.
That's correct, and that's what they've made clear to us, that because there's a, they've decided because the movie theater is located adjacent now, they don't like that co-tenancy.
But they've known all along that the theater was going to be adjacent to them.
It's been on all of our plans, yes.
And there's one currently in close proximity to them, right?
There currently is one in the project now, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Brad, can you walk us through, I mean, there's a lot of, if people have come in on this discussion late, unfortunately, if residents have been saying, well, now the councils are, the Lura Board is now looking at eminent domain, can you walk through what the resolution does, what we're authorizing? If we vote on this and we pass it, can you walk through what the resolution does, or can our, can our council do that real fast?
I will start, and then I do want to invite Robert Duncan here to provide some additional details.
And before Alan, before Alan goes, the mayor and I, as the mayor and myself, have been in meetings with Dillard's, New Mark Merrill, New Mark Merrill, and Regal. You know, we've been in those meetings with staff, and, you know, they're, those meetings have, you know, especially with Dillard's, the idea where Dillard's was going to be and where the theater is going to be, to answer your question, Council, Board members fromori, it's kind of weird going back and forth between the two entities. Yeah, that has always been there. And I, you know, when I talked to Harold on a Thursday, that he talked to Chris Johnson, and then I'll, and things seemed to be going very well, and then the next day, we get, I get a phone call saying it all just went downhill. I thought we were doing very well. I was encouraged. I don't know. I had, I've known, known you, Alan, for over two years. You always, you know, not that I don't trust you, but you have an interest in the piece of property that you purchased. Dillard's has an interest in the piece of property they own. You try to get those two people together and try to work out your differences. But to me, it's obvious that one party is not interested in any type of negotiation and just isn't interested in this community anymore, so.
Mr. Santos and members of the board, I do want to start off with a couple of statements relative to what the resolution would do, and then I do want to invite Robert Duncan to amplify. It essentially sets up a process that would ask us to embark on a negotiation with Dillard's. Now, the difference is now that the Lura negotiations would take precedence, and actually, New Mark Merrill would not be involved in those negotiations. So we would take approximately one month to send them a final offer letter, have a series of negotiations about that, and then at the end of that, make some decisions. Obviously, everybody's objective would be that it would settle, and the project would go on its way. If it doesn't settle, then the decision is made, could be made, to actually file an eminent domain proceeding within the court. What this resolution does not do, it does not compel you to file tomorrow. It authorizes- It authorizes it. So practically speaking, this resolution would not require another vote to actually file an eminent domain proceeding. It's taken care of in this resolution. Practically speaking, and from a, from a community perspective and an open book perspective, I think if there is a decision that needs to be made, that we do have to file, that we would return to the Lura Board in a public setting and, and say that this has to be done and say why and when, so that you are informed and the communities are informed. But we wouldn't necessarily be asking you for another vote because the vote tonight, if you decided to endorse this resolution, would authorize the eminent domain proceeding. The initial step, though, would not be an immediate filing, it would be, we would move to a negotiation and a best offer, best and final offer from the urban renewal authority's perspective with Dillard's before we would file. But with that, I would ask Robert to amplify and correct anything that I said that was incorrect.
Thank you, thank you. Chair, members of the board, Robert Duncan, I met you before and I've participated via, via phone. Brad essentially has exactly correct. If the, this board votes to have a resolution to authorize eminent domain, the first thing that has to happen is there has to be good faith negotiations by this board's representatives. And that, that begins with a, a letter to Dillard's, a formal letter, saying that there's a notice of intent to acquire and we're making an offer. And then the negotiations continue. I'm really not involved in those negotiations. I'll be legal counsel for the people who are, who are actually doing the negotiating. And Brad, would that be, would that be you or?
It's a series of us.
Oh, yeah, series, okay, series. Okay, negotiation by committee on our side. At that point, if the negotiation is successful, boom, it's over, done, nothing's ever filed. If the negoti, if the good faith negotiations, which begin at a minimum with the appraisal that's been done by Mr. McLeod, an MAI appraiser, at $3 million, $30,000, you're not constrained other than, you really can't offer less than that, you can offer as much as... I, I, I don't get involved in the business deals, but I can tell you, it's not my money, it's not my politics, so that's, that's, that's up to this board and your negotiators as to what is ultimately offered. If at the end of that, that time period, there is no deal, then if I'm requested, if I'm requested to do so, then we would file what's known as a petition and condemnation and, which is, we want to acquire, take the, the Dillard's property in fee. As part of that, we can do two things, make a motion for immediate possession, to get possession of its property, and we can also alternatively, or probably go on dual tracks, we can file what's called a motion to vest title. Quickly speaking, in most eminent domain proceedings in the state of Colorado, the first step is merely to gain possession of the property, leaving naked legal title with the owner. But we can, in, the statutes provide, legislation provides that in an urban renewal situation, you may file a, and get title. Whether we get title or possession, and Brad alluded to this earlier, we would be required to make a deposit with the court of the sum that is told to us by either the court or the people doing the vesting of title. So that money has to go into court and the landowner is entitled to withdraw 75% of that money and 100% if everybody gives their consent. We have taxes involved, so usually the tax people can maybe want theirs. I don't know what type of liens, so we've just gotten the title work, what types of liens may or may not be on the property. Typically, I counsel our clients to say, let them take 100% of the money. So let's just use Mr. Ginsburg's number of 3.5 million, say that was ultimately ordered to be deposited into court. We don't have possession or title until such time as that money goes into court. At that point, once we get possession or title, the project goes forward and this becomes, quote, "a regular civil lawsuit." It could take anywhere from six months to a year to resolve finally, which works its way through the courts. But we have what we need for the project and then we're, quote, "just fighting, fighting about money." Make the long story short, that's what it is. If you have any questions?
I just want a clarification because apparently a lot of people think that we take a vote this evening, it's, we're voting eminent domain, there's no discussion, there's no other discussions at all, so I just wanted clarification.
No, and I think the key point is, is that we then, as the, the staff or the urban renewal authority engage in negotiations versus the negotiating has been done by New Mark Merrill up until this point, we would actually engage in those discussions.
Board member Penley.
Thank you, Chairman Coombs. Well, I, to me, it's pretty clear, we can have an empty Dillard's store in a dying mall or we can move forward. I'd like to move forward, so I would, I would move that we adopt a word 2013-03.
He's going to move in second. Councilmember Levinson.
So I have a, I have a short list of questions that I still need some answers to. Let's see, a couple of them have been answered. So I guess I, I just want some additional clarification. The final, when we're looking at the six points in our packet, number five is final offer letter to Dillard's. How do we really know what the right number is? Because there's, we, there's been information, I think, legal statute around, you know, what your liability is if you don't have at least 130% of, I need the nuts and bolts on, you know, it's not just the 100%, we have to be sure to 130% of what the property is worth.
The 130% number works as follows. There's a provision in the statutes that says if the ultimate award, let's say we go to a jury, is in excess of 130% of the last written offer, then we, Lura Board, would be required to pay the reasonable attorney's fees of Dillard's. We can make an offer along the following lines, say we make a final offer of 3.5 million, but we can also say in there, should we go to court? We will not offer 3.5 million, we will have testimony from our appraiser at his appraised number, which would be the $3 million and $30,000. So we give them the incentive of the 3.5 million and that would assure, I just did the math on that, that would be about $4 million, $550,000. If, if the ultimate award was less than that, we would not have to pay their reasonable attorney's fees. I should mention one thing, that every eminent domain entity has the responsibility to pay the reasonable cost of the landowner for the litigation, which typically includes a bevy of experts, which can be anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000. We, Lura, would be responsible, as would every other condemning entity, to pay the reasonable cost. Attorney's fees only come into play should the case be dismissed or the 130% rule takes effect.
Okay, and then the, the other thing that, that I haven't really wrapped my head around is a chart with all the ins and outs of the money. For example, you gave us the 130%
Correct.
...solution, but in some respects, you have to weigh those, the total costs, it's not just the, the offer, it's all the other costs that come into it too. And so my question is, do you just give somebody what they want, they go away, and you have simple and less mess?
That's correct.
Okay? The other, the other risk still frankly is, and I, and I haven't been able to research the legal end of this, we hire you to, to research the legal end of it, whether or not in any of these civil proceedings that a municipality or government entity has ever been, lost the civil procedure, the civil case.
Yes, they have, that's happened.
And how often?
It's, it's hard, hard to say. It happens more often in urban renewal situations, which is taking one person's land and giving it to another, which gets a high level degree of scrutiny and our legislature has raised that bar as contrasted to what I'll call, quote, "a routine taking of a strip of somebody's land to widen a highway." It's equally important, but there's a higher scrutiny when one person's property is taken, not to be actively used by the public entity that's acquiring it, but rather to be given to somebody else.
And, and I, and I guess that what I've heard from members of the public is, you know, do you take from one private business owner who's operating a business and turn around and hand it to another business owner?
Those are political and business.
I know, I know those, I know there's our, but you know, we're the ones who get the emails and the phone calls and read the letters to the editor and the newspaper and all that. You know, I, I have an uncomfortability, I'm uncomfortable about the resolution because there's no second pass through the Lura Board to say, we're absolutely going to order, you know, direct you to file. And that, I'm not feeling comfortable about the resolution for that reason. I also have an extremely adverse, personal feeling around the Supreme Court decision in Kelo that kind of promulgated this situation, kind of situation happening, that, you know, government can come in and if they don't like what the economics of, of a landowner's property is, that we can determine it's in the best interest if someone's not making money somewhere, that we're going to take it and turn it around to somebody who is going to make money. And, you know, we both have, I mean, the city has an interest, I recognize that, you know, this is part of our tax base, this is what people would like to go and shop somewhere, and this is a very large piece of property, but I'm just not, I'm really not convinced and I'm not comfortable with this principle. The other thing is frankly, what's sitting on my home computer screen right now is the Supreme Court of the United States opinion in Kelo, and I, you know, tried to do a cursory review of it today, but also wanted to note that, you know, the little pink house that was Mrs. Kelo's house was moved and the project that the, the city of New London was undertaking for Pfizer never came about. And once the, the incentives left, Pfizer left in 2009.
That's correct, Pfizer did leave. The last time, I, I think I mentioned, I have, I have a picture of the Kelo house on my desk that I took, and I'm not sure that they moved it, but the, a point, a point that you made is an excellent one. This is not primarily for economic redevelopment, this is, project is for the elimination of blight. And that's what the Supreme Court and our Colorado legislature has emphasized. We are not to take one person's property because, I don't know, it's an Elks Hall or a Bingo Hall and we want to put a hotel there. That is not what we're doing, that's not prohibited, that, that is prohibited explicitly. This project is for the elimination of blight and to implement the urban renewal project plan.
Well, but the other, the other point here is that one of the blight conditions was some of these unusual real estate covenants, and it seems that the new big, large format retailer that's going to come in is going to have the same mandate that Dillard's had to have a reciprocal leasement agreement.
Probably that's on the business side of things.
Right, right. And so we're, we're not actually eliminating that unusual title restriction or covenant in this case if we're going to do eminent domain for Dillard's, mostly because they have this veto power when ultimately the, the center is going to be developed with someone else is going to replace Dillard's in the same reciprocal leasement agreement situation. So we, in fact, we will not have cured that blight condition.
At the present time, it appears to me that the, these real estate agreements that were put in place to be a shield against incompatible development is now being, being used as a sword to prevent much needed redevelopment.
Right, oh, thank you.
Councilmembers, or, excuse me, board members tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Coombs. So to clarify, the monies that will be paid are not from the city. It will be New Mark Merrill that pays whatever the final price is that's ordered by the court.
Correct, so associated with the agreement to negotiate, when we go to the judge or the commission, because they can appoint a commission and they say, we need to deposit X amount of dollars. That agreement basically outlines that New Mark Merrill will provide that money to deposit in the court.
Okay.
Now, to, to reiterate what Brad said earlier, is that money is eligible for TIF reimbursement, but that occurs down the road and, and to indicate again what Brad stated, is that there's approximately $33.2 million eligible for TIF reimbursement. The redevelopment agreement has capped that at 27.5.
Right. So earlier, Mr. Ginsburg listed several malls where eminent domain was put into effect. How many of those did go through unchallenged or where the communities didn't lose?
I'm, I'm sorry, members tomorrow, where the community didn't lose?
Yes.
I'm sorry, how do you, I, I don't know what you mean.
Well, you said in urban renewal cases, sometimes the communities lose.
I see, I see, there was, all of those were successful.
All those were successful.
And I should also mention Sheridan, our law firm was involved in that, City of Aurora and the town of Superior all had successful urban renewal authorities.
Okay, thank you.
There was one in Nevada that was not successful. And that, that involved, frankly, it was somebody who wanted to take out some property, a, a, a business and put in a Walmart, and that was not successful. So I think there's probably seven or eight, yeses, one no.
And I guess the biggest difference for me personally here is that Dillard's has made it clear that they don't want to operate in the community. It's not that they want to stay and we're trying to force them out. I think by their actions and responses, they have not indicated or shown any interest in continuing to operate here. So I don't see it as we're taking away their property necessarily. We're going to make them a reasonable offer and it'll be put to good use, it's not going to just sit there vacant.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. My fellow board members have asked some great questions and I guess I just want to share my thoughts, go on the record publicly. First of all, everybody on this council, I think, has been considering this for the last year. It's not something that I'm a big fan of. If I wasn't on city council, I would probably, to tell you the truth, probably be right up there with Mr. Jolly, saying this isn't right. When I first heard about the proposal, the first time I ever met, anyone from New Mark Merrill, the idea of the mall being redeveloped was awesome. I was excited. And it was in that very first conversation that it was brought to my attention that we've got two potential problems. And that problem was, one, Regal has a leasehold, and number two, Dillard's owns their building. And so over the last 12, 14 months, I kind of hope this never, this day would never come. But nevertheless, I knew it was possible, as did we all. And I would like nothing more to be able to manipulate the universe so that everybody wins, but that's not possible. We've got two choices. Choice A is redevelop the mall and exercise our eminent domain powers. Or B, let the mall sit where it is. And as a council member, worried about the mall, agreeing with the mayor, that this has been, this was the number one issue that I heard during my campaign, people want the mall redeveloped. And the problem is that the only way we can do it is figuring out a solution. And the solution is not a favorable one. But nevertheless, what are you going to do? Redevelop the mall and let it sit there. Other than New Mark Merrill, I haven't heard anybody clamoring forth to redevelop the mall. And without some drastic measures from the city, such as an urban renewal authority action and the city helping out and doing the things, frankly, city staff has done over the last year, it's not going to get done. And so the good part about eminent domain, actually, let me talk just for a second, philosophically speaking, while I understand Mr. Jolly. The problem is with eminent domain is that a government acts and then we get the property, but that doesn't take into account the cash flows that are generated by the business. So for example, if the appraisal says the property's worth $3 million, it doesn't take into account the fact that the business is worth something. And if somebody came to my law firm, I asked my wife, as I was trying to explain a break, what we were dealing with, I just said, well, how do you think I'd feel if somebody came along and took my law firm? Oh, your building's only worth X, I'm taking it. And I lose all the hard work that I've had over the last several years and they just take my building and I've got nothing. I'd be ticked. But that's not what's happening here. City council and staff, I mean, I can vouch for them, I have watched them try to bridge the gap. The real estate, the real estate value, the appraisal said 3 million. The real estate, the real estate value, the appraisal said 3 million. We pushed New Mark Merrill to give them an offer well above that, and they came back and they offered 3.5. We also pushed them to basically give an option for Dillard's to stay, which was somewhere around 5 to 6 million. And they didn't want either one. And so, on one hand, they offered more, in my opinion, what the eminent domain law would provide, but they also went up and above and said, "Look, we're gonna give you cash upfront, we're gonna rebuild your building, we're gonna put on a new facade, and at the end, we'll give you a chance. If you don't like how your business has developed, we'll still pay you out for 4 million," which is north of the 5 million that they wanted. They went from 4.5 to 5. I get the impression, talking to city staff with New Mark Merrill, that Dillard's is holding out for more and more and more. Now granted, that is their constitutional right, but nevertheless, there are other things to take into account. I don't think this is much different than putting in a highway or putting in an easement. This is a huge economic center for our city. If it doesn't exist, there's no point in building roads here. There's no point in easements to the mall if the mall doesn't exist. The safety net here is the courts. I'm an attorney. I'm a big believer in the system. If we only offer 3 or 3.5, we exercise eminent domain, the court will get involved and make sure that we pay fair market value. It's very possible the court comes back and says, "No, you gotta pay them 5 million bucks. That's fair." So Dillard's is going to get their day and their opportunity to get what's fair. So unlike in the news when I hear the eminent domain problems that come up, that's not what's happening here. City council and city staff and New Mark Merrill have bent over backwards to make sure that they're getting a fair shake and the process that if we vote to enter into, they're going to be treated fairly, first in the negotiations and then in the court. So I, I don't think it's a misuse of government power here. And last but not least, the, the final, knowing all this, the bit, the, the, this is why I'm gonna vote for it, even though it makes me uncomfortable, is because, at the end of the day, Dillard's also agrees with this process. They haven't said it, but the reason I know it is because when I don't show up to court, I know I'm gonna lose, or I know I'm gonna win, and I just say, "Okay, well, whatever. I don't need to say anything." Dillard's has yet to show up to that podium. I, I mean, city staff, thank you for your work. If I had 5 million dollars on the line, I'd be at that podium. And I'd be saying, "Here's where I, here's what I have to say. Here's my view. Here's why it shouldn't happen." Dillard's knows that as we enter this process, they can negotiate, they can go to court, and they're gonna get fair market value for their property. But if we do not do this tonight, we don't have a mall. And I, for one, wanna go to a mall. And so that pretty much sums up how I'm gonna vote tonight. So that's all I have to say about that.
Chairperson Levinson.
Thank you. You know, I like, I like things to be simpler. And I know that in the past, when I bought houses, sold houses, sometimes you just do what'll get things done faster. And so, you know, I don't want to enter into this process of eminent domain, and frankly, I disagree with you, councilmember Bag, or commissioner or board member.
Board member.
Whoever, whatever, whatever hat you're wearing right now, that it, it's different, that it, it's no different than the, the bridge or the highway. You know, in fact, it is. You know, we're, we're part of the, we're actually part of the negotiation here because we're part of the finance deal. And yet, I also look at other property owners. You know, what's gonna happen the next time when somebody across the street, you know, wants to expand and there's some other person who has, has a, a building that may not be used at the highest cash flow for sales tax? Are we going to turn around and be convinced again that that's the, the proper way for government intervention? And I think it just starts a slippery slope. I mean, I, I see people in the audience who I knew from history of Longmont who have had property taken by eminent domain, and I understand from people in the community that's still a sore spot with them. And frankly, I would just like to keep things simple and say, "Final and best offer." And I, I'm not gonna vote for this. I, I just, in principle, this is just a, a bridge too far for me.
Chairman Santos. I mean, excuse me. Board Member Santos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, Councilmember Levinson, for someone who has voted for eminent domain, I'm surprised that you won't vote for this eminent domain. You know, this is different. And I will support this. While it pains me to do so, I, I, I do see that this does solve the problem of blight by the state statute. You know, Board Member Bagley makes, makes some very good points. We've all made very good points here. But I'm not gonna be, when a fair market value is 3 million 30,000, I'm not gonna It might be simpler to pay 5 million dollars. It might be the easy way out to pay 5 million dollars. If you think it's easier than ponying up the, the difference, I move the previous question.
Hey, let's vote.
I'm gonna vote on the previous question first.
Okay.
Cuss, all debate.
Yeah.
I called it.
Okay. Okay. It's not cleared yet.
I thought I voted.
Okay, it passed at 7 to 0. Now, the, the vote on the resolution. Okay, votes 6 to 1 with Board Member Levinson descending. Councilmember Santos.
Chairman Coombs, I move that we adjourn as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority and reconvene as the Longmont City Council.
Okay, it passed at 7 to 0, so we're now back to Longmont City Council.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is the museum auditorium capital campaign update and funding request. And I believe Wes is here to address staff on, our council on that.
Hi, Mayor Coombs and council. I'm here to give you a little update on the auditorium situation at the museum and to talk a little bit about a proposal that's on the table right now. As most of you know, the museum has been planning for years now to build an auditorium that is space that we've needed for, for a long time now, not only for museum programs, but for other kinds of events that take place in the city. In the master plan of the museum, which was drawn up 10 years ago, 12 years ago, there was always a footprint for an auditorium. And so, with the, with the gift in 2005 from community member Lila Stewart of 1 million dollars, the auditorium became, sort of, came back into discussions, and over the last couple of years, there's been more activity on that front. At this point, Lila has, over the last couple of years, committed more funds, the Stewart family has committed more funds, around 2 million dollars to this project. And we're talking about a 250-seat auditorium, atrium, lobby space, and also an educational space at the museum. So while we talk about an auditorium, it's actually more than that. It's a, it's a lot, it's a couple of other spaces in addition to that. And so, that's where we are right now. We entered a quiet phase of a capital campaign last fall. We retained a fundraising council to assist us in preparing materials and really strategizing on how we were gonna move forward. And since that time, we've had some, we've had some really positive progress. We've raised money from private foundations, the Betscher Foundations and the Gates Foundation, Gates Family Foundation in Denver. We've raised support from the community, and some of those members are here tonight, and we thank them for their, not only for supporting this, I mean, for supporting this financially and, and really helping to convince others to, to, to jump in and help this project. In 2011, the city also contributed 250,000 dollars to this project, which kind of brings us to this point tonight. In the council communication, we've outlined a proposal that Lila Stewart has made to continue to advance this project. She has committed another 500,000 dollars and challenged the city to a match of 250,000 dollars. And so tonight, we're here to talk about that, and I'm here to answer any questions about that. This is a 4.2 million dollar campaign, and this would put us much closer to that goal. It would put us about, if, if this were approved this evening, it would put us about 500,000 dollars away from reaching our goal. So it allows us to go public with this campaign. We've been in a quiet phase, and we're very eager to be out in the community very publicly raising support for this. It also puts us closer to a 90% mark, which would allow us to break ground and get this project going. So we are truly within striking distance of getting this going. It's an extraordinary opportunity for anyone to come forward with this amount of private money, and so it's a very exciting point for us to be at. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and we also have Jim here to discuss funding sources when that time comes.
My first question is, how close to the 90% level will we be if we approve this 250,000, 87%?
87, 88%.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Councilmember Santos.
Wes, why's it taking, you know, why's it taking so long for this to go public? I'm, I'm surprised.
Well, part of it is that once you announce a public campaign, and this is just true with fundraising for capital projects, you really have to be prepared to go. And we, up to this point, have not been a fundraising organization. So we've had to get a lot of our ducks in order, and we find ourselves now at a place where we are prepared to really talk about this publicly, and we're confident that we can reach our, reach our goal.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you, Wes. I think we all treasure and love the museum and what, especially what goes into the museum, not just the physical structure. You know, the shows and what it does in the community is absolutely fantastic. So the one thing that I did see is that if the capital campaign is successful, very successful, in fact, we may not be required to use the whole 250,000 dollars. Is that correct?
That is correct. And so, like I said, we were, you know, we, we have a lot of asks out, we're still approaching foundations, and so it remains to be seen what we'll be able to take in. But you're, you are correct. That is, that is a possibility.
So do you think that the timing of this allocation to support the project might actually provide better leverage when you're writing those grants to foundations?
Absolutely. And I think it shows the community that the city is, is truly behind this project.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Samari.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Harold, are the funds available so we can commit them to the project?
Yes, so part of this, this is a two-part question, so Jim was gonna be part of the answer, but I believe there is 2.2.
Usually Jim is part of the problem.
Yeah. Oh, no, it was part of the solution.
I, I didn't mean to say that. That was a slip of the tongue.
There is 2.2 million available in the undesignated fund balance. Correct. As a side note to, to this part of the discussion, and frankly, one of the reasons why I'm comfortable with this, is also some of the work that's occurred in some other divisions that, that brings a different perspective to this. As you may recall, recently, we were talking about a website and CRTF program that we've been looking at over the last five years, and there were funds budgeted for that program. In reviewing the carryovers for this year's budget and really seeing where we are, I want to commend the shared services group and the work that they've done, because as we were moving forward, there was a stop put on the project in the current direction, and, and they re-envisioned it and moved into a different direction. And as a result of that, 216,000 dollars that was allocated for the website project and for the, I'm gonna call it the, the website just in general, 216,000 dollars just freed up. And, and so seeing that as part of the discussion, I felt comfortable in looking at the numbers associated with this, because it is one-time funds being used for a one-time project. And it's not like we're taking those one-time funds and using them for an ongoing expense, which as we know from our budget discussions, creates other issues, so I think it's a good use. But I also think, I wanted to highlight the great work that was done in this process in another area of the organization that's, that can be used to benefit the museum project.
So I, I agree with Wes that if the city is behind it and the community is behind it, it strengthens their ability to go out and ask for more funding from foundations and individuals. So I would move that we approve the additional 250,000.
I second it.
Up 2.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I have the honor and privilege of being the liaison with the museum board. I get all the fund boards. Nobody argues about museums or libraries or all that kind of stuff, so I got it pretty easy. But I also think there's another aspect here. First, I kind of think that, I mean, I dare say we owe it to Lila Stewart. She's given a lot of money. And I know that she'd like to see this completed before her family reaches a point where they're not able to enjoy it and appreciate it. So I, I think that's one. And the other thing is, I'm a big believer in math. And here, if we say no, we're still building it, right? I mean, we've already got the money committed. It's just that if we say yes, Lila Stewart's willing to give us even more. You know, so by saying no, we're just basically saying, "All right, well, let's just double our costs." So I mean, to me, it's, it's just math. We do it, and we can do it sooner. We can get the money reimbursed by fundraising, and everybody wins. I, I see absolutely no, no downside here. Right? Okay, all right. That, that, so yeah, let's do it. Let's vote.
Councilmember Penley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I, I just wanted to publicly thank you, Wes, for all your work at the museum. You've done a great job. I'm so glad you're there. And I also wanted to publicly thank Lila Stewart for her generous donation, and it is just math. 5 to 1 is a pretty good return, so I'll be voting for it.
All right, let's, let's vote. Well, it's unanimous, 7 to 0. I like that math.
Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is updates and next steps for potential amendments to the land development code for microbreweries, distilleries, wineries, and tasting rooms. And Aaron Fostick will make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of city council. Earlier this year, I spoke to you regarding some comments that we'd received from several individuals, including prospective business owners, property managers, and developers, as well as other individuals in the community. That Longmont's current regulations may be too restrictive as they relate to microbreweries, distilleries, wineries, and tasting rooms. At your meeting in January, you directed us to do some additional research, bring back information to you. So since that time, we have conducted that research. We've looked at how other communities approach regulating these types of uses from a land use perspective. We've looked at the needs of these types of businesses. We've taken a look and provided some information on the Colorado Liquor Code, and we've also provided some information on tax exemptions, which was a question that was raised at the meeting in January. Tonight, we're just seeking direction from you on whether or not to move forward with drafting these amendments to remove the barriers and promote this business opportunity in the city. If we're directed to move forward... If we're directed to move forward tonight, our next step would be to conduct public outreach and we would take this to Planning and Zoning Commission for their recommendation. And just to let you know what we would be focusing on, while this is a complex issue, we would be focusing on the land use aspects of this. So we would really be looking at appropriate locations for these types of businesses, so what zoning districts, how the uses are allowed, are they permitted, are they accessory, are they conditional? And what additional standards may be appropriate from the perspective of these businesses. So things like parking, separation standards, residential protection, things like that. So that would be what we would be focusing on and we would also likely be looking at definitions for the land development code, which those don't exist today. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Whit.
I actually don't have any questions. I think that you've done, you've done your research, you've done your work and I think that I would like to move that we direct you to carry on.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, passes seven to zero. About your direction. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Coombs, the next item is the appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision on the Grandview Meadows preliminary PUD development plan amendment and variances to the riparian setback and residential design standards. And Don Burchett will lead that conversation up.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of the council. My name is Don Burchett with Economic Development Department. And also with me tonight, in case you have any questions of our staff, I have Steve Ranswiler, who is a project manager in the Public Works Natural Resources Department. Tonight, you will be acting as the appeal board and hold a hearing on an appeal of an application that was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. As Valerie read into the record, it is for the Grandview Meadows apartment complex, the Grandview Meadows preliminary PUD development plan with two variances that were heard by the planning commission. And tonight, in your packet, there is a procedure outline that was in attachment one that we had to add in after we realized it. It wasn't in there in your packet originally, but it kind of walks you through the process tonight. The main thing is that I will do a quick overview of the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Then the appellant will have the ability to present evidence and argument supporting his challenge of the approval of the application. The applicants will also have an ability then to present evidence and argument in support of the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision. The council has an option to open up a public hearing and take additional testimony if you so choose. The attorney's office, in going through this, has also recommended that the council consider after the presentation either by the public or after the appellant and the applicant's presentation, that we are offered a chance to rebut any of the information that's presented, both the staff, the appellant and the applicant, that we would consider. The city council, there were resolutions included in your packet. One of them is to uphold the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Another is, allows you to modify the decision. So if you feel that their, their decision was not completely correct, you can make a decision to modify. Or you could deny the request, or the, I guess reverse their approval would be a better way to say it, as another resolution that you can adopt as well tonight. So with that, I will quickly, just do a quick overview. Again, on February 20th, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on the Grandview Meadows preliminary PUD development plan amendment with variances to the riparian setback and to the architectural design, residential design standards. The commission approved the request, five to two, with two conditions, and those conditions were found in PZR 2013-2B, which is in your packet. The appellant, Mr. McReary, appealed on February 25th, 2013, and has requested that you review the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission and consider overturning that approval. And with that, that ends our presentation and I'll get everything ready for the applicant, or for the appellant and the applicant.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark McReary, 4133 Hawthorne Place in Longmont. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to Don and his work to help me through this process coming before you today, or this evening for this appeal. I'm a, an eight-year resident in Longmont on the west side of town and my neighbors and I have enjoyed the open space opportunities that living on the west side provides. It's really the major reason why we, why we lived on the west, why we live on the west side, the reason we purchased the home that we purchased and many of our neighbors in the Meadowview HOA and development near Altona Middle School purchased those homes. The, the area that we're concerned about is the Dry Creek riparian area and open space. And it runs really throughout town, but the area specifically is, it really is the gateway to the Dry Creek Park, a regional park that's being developed now. It's so, such a nice amenity and a big part of the lifestyle that we enjoy in Longmont. And the riparian area and open space runs from that area through the Meadowview HOA east and, you know, all the way actually into the barn park and beyond. So it's an area that's enjoyed by lots and lots of residents every day, hundreds of residents every day. And the schoolchildren travel that area to and from school every day. And it's, it's really, I think, an important resource and one that I think that the P&amp;Z decision is going to diminish if we allow it to go forward. And that's why I'm before you tonight to talk about that. And while I do think there's kind of a, the bigger picture here is, you know, what do we want to represent in Longmont in terms of our lifestyle, what do we want to support? And I think your decision in part will speak to that and the importance of maintaining open space, those buffers between the separate uses and those kinds of things. It's also, in my mind, and really the reason, the justification for being here tonight is because it's just wrong based upon the code. And so the other thing that I hope to be able to point out to you tonight in going through this code is that, from my perspective, it's kind of black and white. I think there's been some mistakes that have been made and as a result, the P&amp;Z decision is just erroneous and needs to be withdrawn or needs to be overturned. I will try to walk you through that process as it relates to the code. And I certainly don't want to read the code directly to you all. You're certainly aware of, of the code and, but that said, I thought we were compelling in the Planning and Zoning Commission. I thought it was a clear case there as well and I was surprised by the decision-making that went there. And so I do want to beg your tolerance as I walk through really the evaluation that I made in looking at the code and looking at the developer's proposal and coming to my own conclusion. I don't take that lightly. I'm certainly pro-development and I appreciate any private property owner's ability to generate income on their property. So I respect that, but I also respect the value of the community's open space and the things that I think we hold closely as a community. So with that, I sent you some extensive information, I think, on the code. And what I've, what I've got for you tonight is a handout that I hope the clerk can distribute that is really, I hope just to guide us through that process quickly because I, you know, it's a long night, obviously. And hopefully, in that way, we can kind of be clear about what the points are that I want to make, that I was unable to make at the P&amp;Z.
Councilmember Levinson.
Yes, Mayor. Since this is documentation that's new, that hadn't been part of the record, can I, I'd like to move that we accept the paperwork that Mr. McReary has given us as part of the record. Formal record, please.
Okay. To the rest of you all. Yeah.
Mayor and council Eugene May, city attorney. Certainly, this is the time for the appellant to present evidence and argument to council. And so if you want to incorporate it into the administrative record now, that'd be fine. We can certainly do it at the end, kind of do it en masse.
Can we have this general consensus?
Yeah, we'll accept everything during these. That's what I thought it was. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. And I guess I'd like to point out, there's really nothing new here that's not in my letter, but I did want to try to be concise and get through this with you all. I want to give you a little bit of background, as I understand it, about this development first to give you the framework. Grandview Meadows apartments are located about, I guess about 700 feet to the west of the edge of Meadowview HOA and my home. And my, my home faces west and faces Altona Middle School and the proposed development. I think this is a development that staff can give you some of the details on if you have those questions, but it's been amended three, and this would be the fourth amendment to the original development plan here. And in the process, this apartment complex is looking to get its, I think, 25th, 26th, 27th, 28th and 29th apartment buildings approved. As a part of that process, and maybe off by a building or two, but there's many, many apartment buildings in this, in this development. As a part of that kind of expansion, history over the last six or seven years, or maybe, maybe longer, again, perhaps Don can speak to that timeline. One of the considerations for you, I think, is that, that the original ownership of this parcel, when, when the developer first bought this parcel, the area under consideration here, 3A, was part of the 100-year floodplain. And so it was not purchased as, in a long-term plan by this developer in order to develop the property at all. It was in the 100-year floodplain and was not developed. It was only after the city went through a process of developing the Dry Creek area as it currently exists and creating the pond and the Dry Creek Park, that this property became developable, essentially bringing it outside of the 100-year floodplain and opening it up. So from my perspective, while I appreciate, again, the developer's interest in trying to make as much, as much money as he can, from our perspective, it's found, it's found property for them. With that said, I want to, I want to speak to the code conditions, but in understanding the setback variance issue that, that is really at the core of this, you first and foremost have to define what it is you're trying to protect. And I think that's really ultimately what this is about from my perspective. If you look at 15.10 in the Longmont Municipal Code Definitions, as you've got the top of your handout, a wetland is basically an area that is inundated and saturated by surface water or groundwater at a frequency or, or duration that's sufficient to support or does support vegetation adapted for life in saturated soil conditions. I think we all understand that. Sorry to read it to you. A riparian area is further defined then separately, right, as land areas adjacent to a stream corridor or wetlands. So they're separate, they're not the same, they're different. I think you've got to have a wetland in order to have a riparian area, right? But the code is very specific about there being a distinction between wetland and riparian area. And I think that's important because really the code in terms of protecting the riparian area is based upon that definition. As we get through that, I think you'll see that. Moving on to 15.05.020, where it talks specifically about protections of rivers, streams, wetlands and riparian areas. Again, both are mentioned. And the purpose is important. Excuse me. The purpose is to promote, preserve and enhance the important hydrologic, biologic, ecological, aesthetic, recreational and educational functions, pardon me, that rivers and stream corridors, wetlands and associated riparian areas provide in the city of Longmont. Again, they're separate and distinct and they're both designed to be preserved and enhanced. That's how I read it. I think we need to protect it and I think, as staff was evaluating this proposal, thanks. One of the things that concerns me is the taxpayers, I don't believe they looked at this as a, from the perspective that they're going to try to preserve and enhance it. And, and I think that will, that will show. Let's look at C point, C point three riparian area boundaries quickly. All riparian area boundary delineations are subject to the city's approval. C 1510 for the definition. So we've seen that essentially, the developer's got to present to city staff what they view the riparian area is and then build their setbacks from that location, okay? And, and it's ultimately up to city staff to make that decision and it says that in the code clearly. But, again, in order to apply it and the intent of the code to preserve and enhance, my contention is that staff would need to look at both wetlands and riparian areas as a part of what is set aside to be preserved. I don't see any argument, I don't see any wiggle room in there. Let's move on to the setback condition specifically then under E. For river stream corridors and riparian areas, all building accessories, structures and parking areas shall be shut, set back at least 150 feet from the below listed rivers and stream corridors in riparian areas, and this is important, measured from the outer edge of riparian vegetation, okay? I went into great detail in my, in my appeal letter about vegetation and I don't want to get into that, I don't think it's necessary, I think it's simpler than that. Basically, you know, the city of Longmont, the taxpayers built the open space. We built Dry Creek. You guys did a great job doing that. Parks and open space should be applauded for that work. And now what we're going to do is we're going to take what they've done, we're going to diminish it. And that's going to be bad for us, it's going to be bad for the neighbors, it's going to be bad for the community and it's just a bad decision based upon the code. In terms of this specific setback now, because we're Dry Creek, it's 100 foot, not 150 feet, okay? And, and I think it says that for all other rivers and stream corridors, the setback's 100 feet. I'll show you, I think in the handout, the exhibit that was provided by the developer and I'll show you as we turn the page here, and I'll come back to design and aesthetics. I believe you've got in your handout a cross-section, do you guys have that? Okay, this is, this, this document is taken from the town's construction plans for Dry Creek, okay? This is what was built on the property by the city, by the taxpayers, okay? And if you look at the exhibit, you'll notice that it, it's basically a two-tiered system where you've got a channel, a stream channel that runs down the middle, and then they've got an area that's called a 24-foot flood-prone area on either side. I, I think, from my perspective, that's a wetland because those are where wetland species are going to grow because that's where the saturated soils are. And I think you see that when you look at Dry Creek. If you look further, you see it's called, the full definition and the full width of this structure is called 130-foot greenway, okay? From my perspective, as I read it and as I relive it, essentially, that is the, that's the width of the open space, that's the width of the riparian area, and that's what deserves to be protected. As we see, the developer believes something entirely different than that and I think that's really at the crux of the problem. Again, if you look at, if you look at the title of that cross-section, it is called "Typical Wetland Cross-Section." I didn't make that up, that's in the city construction plans. So, again, we can split hairs about what's wetland and where do you draw that line between wetland and riparian, but the city's own documents, I think, show that the way that the developer has defined it is not going to be accurate. And, again, I, I provided you guys with the overall construction plan just so you could see where I referenced the elevation, okay? We don't need to refer to that, I can't see that. I also provided for you the Dry Creek Community Park map. And what I'd like to point out is, as I said, it's, it's an important green belt as it's really the entryway to that park. And really, again, I think a jewel of town and one of the reasons why the west side is so special and why we love to live there. If you look at the Dry Creek Greenway portion of that on that map, I think you'll see that this is not just following the little stream channel as a six-foot band, it's really encompasses the entire width, the 130 feet, if you will, of that riparian area. So the city's own documents refer to these open spaces, this green belt, these wetlands as important and I think from a, from a, from the code standpoint, very, very clearly deserve and are entitled to protection. Now, you may not agree that the developer's idea is a bad one, you may not think that Dry Creek is worthy of that kind of protection because it's man-made, as I think some of the P&amp;Z believe that. But it really doesn't matter. If you rely on the code and you support the code and we're going to apply the code fairly, I don't believe you can come to a conclusion that P&amp;Z applied it fairly. And as a result, I think you have to support the appeal. Again, let's turn to what the developer's line was and if you have this in your handout, as I believe you do, I hope you do. This is the document that really is, is the developer's exhibit and this is based upon their environmental survey. And if you look, you can see the dark line along the bottom is obviously the stream channel. And they've got a bold black line that kind of follows that, that parallels that, that's called the limit of the riparian habitat. It's called the limit of the riparian habitat. And I hope everybody can see that. And you can see as a part of the P&amp;Z decision, the 100-foot setback line that was drawn based upon that line, okay? And you can see a crosshatched area that became really the focus of the conversation with P&amp;Z as it related to some of the mitigation that they were going to do for encroaching into the setback. And that's essentially enhanced landscaping that you can see along that crosshatched area in the upper left-hand corner of the drawing there that really is a part of that parking area, okay? I think the developer would have you believe that that's the limit of the impact, and if you believe his line is the limit of the riparian area that should be protected, then that's correct. But what I'm telling you is that's incorrect. And I've tried to give you something to look at to help you with that. And if you see this document that I've provided for you, and again, this is right off the city's construction plans. What I've tried to do here is highlight for you really and to allow you to compare the developer's exhibit with what I think the reality is. The yellow line represents the stream channel of Dry Creek. The red dotted line, I think, is a fair approximation of the developer surveyed riparian habitat. And the blue line that I highlight at the top of the page is the greenway boundary as it was originally built and designed by the city. Now, from my perspective, it's pretty clear where you need to draw the setback line from, and that it needs to be drawn from the greenway boundary. Now, if you further study that document, you'll notice that there's seeding material, directions, and things of that nature that talk about a wetland seed mix well outside of the red dotted line. And again, I don't want to get into the plant species and that. I don't know that we need to get into it to that degree. It's very important, though, to understand that the taxpayers paid for this green belt to be developed. The residents of the area are enjoying the use of that. It's an important buffer. It's an important wildlife habitat, and hopefully will continue to develop into a greater habitat over time. And as a result of that, it deserves protection. From my perspective, before you even get into the setback criteria, the architectural standards, and the standards for construction next to open space, which are the next three issues that we need to talk about, before you even talk about the code criteria for relief, I can tell you, if you believe my line and not the developer's line, that we can throw out the P&amp;Z decision and the developer needs to start over. He needs to draw the 100-foot setback line from the edge of the greenway boundary and allow us all to evaluate what the impacts of that development will be based upon that actual, based upon where the actual line ought to be drawn. So I apologize for going into such detail on that, but I think it's very important that we not get caught up in a lot of the details about where should the landscape screening stop, what kind of colors and buffers and architecture. While all of that stuff is important in terms of the relief criteria that he needs, none of it's valid because the line's not been drawn correctly. So from my perspective, P&amp;Z's decision is based upon an erroneous designation of the riparian area, and as a result, he needs to go back and start again. Now, I have some sympathy for the developer. I think staff misapplied the code here. I don't believe they evaluated the riparian area correctly, and I'm sure they'll be able to speak to that if you'd like them to. But that's how I read it, and it's black and white from my perspective. With that said, you all may not believe that. P&amp;Z didn't believe that or didn't understand what we were trying to say. So I'd like to go ahead and continue quickly through the code criteria for relief of the setback standards and the architectural standards and talk about how I think P&amp;Z failed in evaluating those criteria correctly as it relates to the setback, as it relates to the variance request that the developer made. And I think, I didn't give you additional handout material on this, but I think it's covered fairly clearly in my original appeal letter. So I'll try to hit those quickly and then shut up so you guys can ask questions or get additional information. Basically, he's got to be 100 feet off of the riparian line. So wherever we define that line, he can't build his parking lot. He can't build his buildings within 100 feet of that. And according to his existing line now, is putting some of that parking structure within that 100 feet. What he's decided to do or what he's offered to do to accommodate that or to alleviate that is put up some additional dense landscape screening over about a third of that entire stretch, that border with that, I guess it's the southern property border with the open space property. And it's important, I think, that we recognize that the homes are to the east. So he's going to be screening a landscape or a parking area from, you know, essentially from the traffic along Grandview Meadows and from Altona Middle School. And while I think it's important to screen it from everybody's perspective, we've not done a thorough job in screening this development. And one of the conditions, and I think if we get back to that first page, I'll show you about, let me get back on track here with that. The code conditions require that aesthetic screening. So again, this is back to the handout tonight. Design and aesthetics. Projects adjacent to large natural areas or natural area corridors shall be designed to complement the visual context of the natural area. Techniques such as architectural design, site design, and the use of native landscaping, the choice of colors and building materials should be utilized in a manner that scenic views across or through the site are protected. Scenic views are protected. Scenic views are protected. And I think it's important that we realize we're not protecting scenic views from residents to the east of this property. We're not protecting scenic views from the hundreds of recreationalists that use this corridor every day. We're not going to be protecting the scenic views from the folks that are in Dry Creek Regional Park and enjoying that in years to come. So I think we can do a better job in terms of applying that code, you know, and while I appreciate the dense landscaping over a 200-foot section, that property boundary is about 600 feet, and I think we need to address all of that boundary in terms of screening. Back to the setbacks real quickly. Let me get to the conditions for setback approval in the P&amp;Z decision, okay? And this is, again, is in my appeal letter, and this is right out of, this is right out of the code. I'll try to be specific about it. This is 15.05.020.3. B, Reduced Setbacks. So if you're going to grant reduced setbacks, this is what the Planning and Zoning Commission has got to refer to, okay? And these are criteria that have to be used. The word is shall, not may. They have to be applied. Item number one, the purpose and intent of this section is to allow for preservation and enhancement of river and stream corridors and other riparian areas, not wetlands, and to ensure that it is maintained. And two, that the reduced setback is consistent with the scope of the development, taking into consideration existing conditions and the extent of the site changes. But from my perspective, one and two can't be fairly evaluated because the line's been drawn wrong. So we have to go back and reevaluate it after the developer redesigns based upon the correct setback. Item number three, the conservation plan demonstrates an absence of wildlife species or existing or potential wildlife habitat along the river, stream corridor, or riparian area. This is an interesting one from my perspective because the developer's environmental report really acts as the conservation plan because there isn't a conservation plan on file with the city. What the developer's expert has claimed is, and I provide this information directly out of their report, that there's no unique or sensitive wildlife habitat within the parcel. Well, the parcel they're referring to is, of course, the apartment complex, not the green belt, right? So we're talking about setbacks from the green belt, and we're not talking about wildlife habitat on the apartment complex. And right out of the gate, you can see the intent, and I appreciate the developer. I get it. But the point is, what are we trying to do? We're trying to preserve and enhance. And what they're saying is there's no wildlife habitat on the apartment complex, okay? If you go on and read a little further down, the consultant does say that the vegetation along Dry Creek provides some habitat. Well, I know it provides habitat because I see the wildlife every day. My kids see it and enjoy it. My neighbors see it and enjoy it. The school kids see it and enjoy it. And anybody that goes to the park and goes up and down that green belt sees it and enjoys it. And so right out of the gate, again, the conservation plan demonstrates an absence of wildlife species or existing or potential wildlife habitat. Well, this is the wildlife habitat. This is what we're supposed to be protecting. They're discounting it, and I think that's a detriment to everybody, and it should be protected. Based upon that alone, the Planning and Zoning Commission needs to be pitched. They didn't consider that as a part of their approval of the setback variance. Item number three, the development mitigates a modified setback standard by providing a higher quality, more desirable wildlife habitat enhancement along the corridor or alternatively in another location as approved by the planning director. I think the enhancement that the developer would claim is that the more intense landscaping along the 200 feet along the western boundary there is additional wildlife habitat. While I've got no argument with that, it doesn't speak to the other two-thirds of the property, either from a screening standpoint or from a wildlife enhancement standpoint. And it doesn't speak to the detriment that the proximity of the parking garages, the lighting, the garbage facilities, the in-and-out traffic in an apartment complex is going to do to wildlife there. Now, I'm not here to tell you that it's mutual of Omaha out there, right? But it is an area that's important. It's an area that the taxpayers have paid for, and it's an area that if we let it continue to develop, is going to be a very nice wildlife habitat and act as a nice buffer between the homes, the park uses, and the more dense apartment complexes. I think that's the point, and I think we're diminishing that and obviously urge you not to do that. That's the setback argument, I think. What I'd like to do is talk a little bit about the compatibility and design and aesthetic requirements because those conditions we're not adhered to, in my opinion, by the planning and zoning decision either. One of the things that the PUD, in order to get the PUD approval, the variance, if you look at 15.03.060.e.g., the PUD is compatible with surrounding properties, neighborhoods, and land uses and/or will substantially mitigate adverse impacts. And I think this is where I get to the, you know, the one-third screening versus the two-third screening. Two-thirds of this property are going to be wide open to the open space, wide open to the riparian area. They're going to have what minimal code landscaping is required around a parking structure, but it doesn't speak to the value of the open space. It doesn't speak to the value of the buffer. It doesn't speak to the value of the long-term value for this property, you know, as wildlife habitat. It certainly wasn't addressed by the planning and zoning decision, and as a result of that, I believe it needs to be overturned. The last area, I think, of concern is the design and aesthetic considerations and the specific criteria that P&amp;Z needed to consider to overturn that variance request. Let me read to you 15.05.020.k, Design and Aesthetics. I think we've read some of that. I don't want to redo that. Yeah, this is where techniques such as architectural design, site design, and the use of native landscaping and choice of colors and building materials can be utilized to mitigate impact. The variance was required and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission for this because this developer uses built-in, uses prefabricated tilt-in-place panels to do their apartment complex design and to do their construction. And as a result, all of the buildings look the same, and that is no longer allowed under the code. The architectural design standards for multifamily require diversity in appearance and exterior appearance. Staff did not believe this was met in the original application and a variance was requested by the developer in order to meet it or in order to get around that. Certainly, we're concerned about the visual impacts, both from our homes and from the open space. And the fact that the aesthetic characteristics of this are going to be cookie cutter speaks exactly to why the code was written the way it was written, was to avoid that, to prevent that, that kind of a design. I want to read those conditions, but the most significant, and this is from the city code for residential design standards. It's 15.05.110.i. Variations in architectural design of three-family, four-family, and multifamily dwellings, all three-family, four-family, and multifamily developments, including any detached garages, shall provide quality architectural design that includes variation in the design of the dwellings and garages, including changes in the roof lines, facade, planes, building materials and colors, trims and accent features, windows and door placement, inclusion of prominent entry features or other features that provide variation in design. The P&amp;Z decision included the condition that materials and colors be varied in these five buildings that are going to be added to this development if the P&amp;Z decision is upheld. What it didn't take into account was any changes in any of these other conditions, including the facade line, the heights of the buildings, the number of buildings. Again, this is five additional buildings. It's going to bring the total to 29 buildings in the whole development. There was no discussion about eliminating any of them. There was no discussion about redesign of the amount of parking. There was certainly no discussion about changing the exterior architecture. In fact, the argument that planning and zoning hung their hat on was that the tilt-in-place prefabricated, you know, nature of these buildings was going to be safer for workers because they didn't have to climb ladders. And while that may be true, and the other argument was that it was going to be a little more environmentally sensitive because there'd be less transportation materials to and from the site. Those are all valid points, but they have nothing to do with the code for the architectural design standard variance. And as a result of that, I think they based their decision on the wrong kinds of issues. There's another, a couple of other important elements of that, of the design standards, and that's 15.05.110.IB2. And that just talks generally about quality. The quality has to be higher. The variance is not granted relief so that it can get easier for the developer. It's supposed to set the bar higher, and I think what we've done with this P&amp;Z decision is set the bar lower. Again, they did not consider facade changes. They didn't consider the number of buildings. They didn't consider the plane of the buildings as it fronts either Grandview or it fronts Dry Creek. So from all of those reasons, I think, again, these conditions were not met. And I think the most important, perhaps, from an architectural standard is 110.iF, and that is that if the decision-making body grants a variance, that it shall consider the least deviation possible from the standard. And as we talk about the standard and some of the architectural things that they need to meet, I don't think it's possible for you to say that the decision P&amp;Z made to allow this to go forward with merely color changes that were not defined and textural changes on the exterior that were not defined is the least change, the least impact, the least deviation from the standard. That was never even a consideration. While staff brought it up, and it's clear in the staff report that that's a requirement, P&amp;Z didn't go to that effort. You know, significant adverse impacts is the last condition. You know, I think there's ways to mitigate this. I've always thought there were ways to mitigate this and do this in a way that didn't require appeal and it won't require upset neighbors. The developer's not shown themselves to be really willing to have that discussion with us. And I guess to sum it up, I'd say that I appreciate your time very much, the opportunity to make the argument. From my perspective, lots of these code conditions are not even relevant because the line's not been drawn correctly. Let's protect what we paid for as taxpayers. Let's protect what our values are. Let's help our values, you know, enhance our values, the things that we're paying for as taxpayers. And really, this is a classic case of that. No, it's funny because as Boulder County taxpayers, we've got open space all over the place that we put fences around. We buy taxpayers' money to buy open fields that we can't use. Well, here's 600 feet of Dry Creek open space that's used by hundreds of people every day. And for this guy's 26th, 27th, 28th, and 29th building, we're going to devalue that. I don't think that's fair, and I don't think it follows the code. I don't think P&amp;Z understood that, perhaps because I didn't do a very good job outlining this. I hope I've done a better job tonight. While I value very much the developer's ability to make a living and would not stand in his way to do that, it should not come at the cost of the community benefit and the investment we already have in Dry Creek. So with that, I will shut up and say thank you very much for the time. I appreciate it. I'll try to answer any questions, but we'll certainly defer to staff and appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah, let's take a five-minute break. That's a good idea. That's a good idea.
Well, I guess since we don't want to run across our 11 o'clock, we should probably get going again, so let's resume the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me, my name is Larry Owen, and I am the engineering consultant for the project on behalf, speaking on behalf of the developer. And I have a PowerPoint presentation that I'll go through briefly, but there's a couple of things I wanted to clear up just before we get started. I'm a little bit of a disadvantage because I didn't have any of the additional material that you saw, but I've quickly looked at it, so I'll try to accommodate that. Just a few quick points of clarification. There was, mention made that this is the fourth amendment to the original plan. This is actually the fourth phase of the project. It's only the first amendment. The plan was approved by city council in 1998, I believe, after an annexation in 1995. The project has been developed over a course of 14 years now, but all of that was under the original PDP approval. This is the first amendment to it. The Greenway area where Dry Creek flows now was originally floodplain, correctly stated, but it was always intended to be taken out of the floodplain. The city had planned long ago to create a regional detention facility to the west of Dry Creek, or at least Grand Bemidows Boulevard, Grand Bemidows Drive, I guess it is. And they initiated the CLOMAR, which allowed the reconfiguration of the floodplain. But it should be noted that the developer paid half of the cost of that CLOMAR. They also paid half of the cost of the improvements to the Dry Creek Greenway in the area that abuts their property. And so much mention has been made of the taxpayers paying for this, but I think it should be recognized that this developer paid a good share of it, and he has continued to pay by, he dedicated additional land so that the Greenway could be wider through that stretch than it would otherwise have been. He has paid for, as I said, approximately half of the cost of the improvements to the Greenway, and he has also paid for half of the cost of the underpass, the pedestrian underpass at Grand Bemidows Drive. So it's not, he hasn't been sort of an absentee in this whole process. He's been very active, very contributing to the city and to the amendments that are there. What I'd like to do now is go back and address the appeal points, kind of in the order that they arose. So I'm going to, I think, go through this. Am I working this thing wrong, Don? If I get this to advance. Do I want to work down here? I can, okay. The appeal of the planning and zoning resolution claims that the P&amp;Z commission based their approval on erroneous material, erroneous information, that they failed to properly consider the requirements for review of the criteria. Really, the claims are based on two essential premises. One, that the boundary of the riparian area was not properly delineated due to inappropriate application of indicator information. And secondly, that the variations in exterior, the exterior architecture of the buildings are not sufficient. So based on those two contentions, the appellant is asking that the amendment to the PUD be denied. In fact, information that was given to planning and zoning was correct, and I believe that they, the review criteria have been met, and thus we will show you, I believe, that P&amp;Z resolutions should be upheld. With respect to the riparian setback variance, here with me. Yep, okay, good, thanks. The first issue has to do with reference documentation. The appellant claimed that the area delineation must reference the Corvengian Wetlands Delineation Manual per the Longmont Code. He's also handed out the information you got earlier that shows a typical cross-section through the Dry Creek channel, or it says a typical wetland cross-section. It doesn't specifically say Dry Creek. I think what needs to be understood in here is that the wetland area would be in the 5.6 feet that he's showing as the approximate width of the channel here. The 24-foot flood-prone area is where you would expect to find riparian vegetation. Everything beyond that, up the slopes and to the, what is labeled as the 40 to 40-foot, 48-foot second terrace, is upland vegetation. The area to be delineated as a basis of the setback is the riparian area. The wetlands are contained within it, but the code requires that we delineate and map the riparian area. And that's, in fact, what was done. We weren't asked to delineate the wetland area because they're inclusive. It's within the riparian area. The Wetlands Delineation Manual, therefore, and the wetland plant lists that were cited by the appellant and included in his earlier submittal are not strictly applicable, but they do provide a reference to the indicator species. If we look at the riparian area vegetation, the appellant claims that the indicator species that were found outside of the delineated riparian area were slender ryegrass and smooth broom. Those are, and he claims that those were improperly interpreted. Well, in fact, what happens is that the reference document that he cites shows, or at least shows that the, these two species are considered facultative in the western mountains, valleys, and coast region, but Longmont's not in the western valleys, mountains, and coast region. It's in the Great Plains region. And if you look on that reference, and I'm ahead of myself, go a couple more forward, you will find that both of those species are actually indicative of upland vegetation. So the area that was characterized by ERO Resources as the riparian area and was delineated and mapped on the site is, in fact, correct. The riparian area, as is stated in their report, is characterized by sandbar willow, reed canary grass, eastern cottonwoods, and patches of cattails. Those are in the wetland area. They're within the creek channel. They're in that first bench area outside of the creek channel, but beyond that, where you get into the slender ryegrass and the smooth broom, those are, in fact, upland vegetation in this area. The appellant also claims that the riparian area isn't, the true width of it isn't reflected because we didn't delineate it to include the full width of the Greenway. Well, the Longmont Code requires that the applicant employ a qualified person with expertise in the field, which is ERO Resources, to inspect and delineate the area. As it currently exists, we're not mandated to delineate what once was, or what might have been, or what might be in the future. We're asked to delineate what exists now, and that's, in fact, what they did. They went out, they inspected the site, they identified the indicator vegetation, they delineated and mapped the existing boundaries of the indicator vegetation, and then city staff who are also qualified further inspected the delineation, the flags that they put in the field, and staff concurred with them. They said, yes, we believe this is a correct delineation of the mapped wetlands. So we believe, and we're completely convinced, that the delineation of the riparian area is accurate, and that then sets the basis for the 100-foot setback zone from the riparian area. The next issue that the appellant addresses is the review criteria and whether or not they were fairly evaluated. He says that the first two criteria can't be fairly evaluated because the riparian area wasn't properly delineated. Well, I think we've shown that, in fact, it was delineated as it currently exists, not as it's shown on the city drawings that are 12 years old, but as what exists now, and that's what the developer is dealing with. So criteria number one, then, mandates us to preserve and enhance river and stream corridors. The appellant claims that the corridor is diminished by the proposed development. In fact, it should be understood that development does not encroach onto the Greenway. In fact, it encroaches only into the fringe of a portion of the setback zone. The development plans propose additional landscaping to significantly screen the encroaching elements of the development. The additional berming will elevate the landscaping, which will increase the apparent maturity, will accelerate the screening, and it will enhance the appearance. So basically, by placing a berm along the southern perimeter of the area where there is an encroachment, and then planting the vegetation on top of that, we've effectively added years to the growth of that vegetation and increased the screening potential for it. The additional vegetation will also add to the vegetated character of the Greenway, and it will increase the available habitat for birds and small animals. I think he acknowledged that. The proposed mitigation will expand rather than diminish the effectiveness of the Greenway. So by what we're doing, we're adding to the Greenway rather than taking away from it. The second criteria requires that the adjudicating body consider whether the scope of the requested variance is consistent with the scope of the development. And the appellant doesn't really make a claim against this, but in the context of showing that the criteria have been met, I'd like to reiterate that, again, the encroachment is not into the Greenway. It's only into the setback zone. And in fact, the encroachment, as you can see from this drawing, this overview, is represented by the crosshatched area. Yeah, this area that's being pointed to. That crosshatched area represents about 4.1% of the total setback area between the dash line that you see on the figure there near the creek and the dashed line that's 100 feet or more away from that, because the setback zone really kind of hits the high points across there, the caps of the tops of the waves. And so at the areas where the creek channel meanders away from the development, the setback is even further. The, as I say, the encroachment here represents a little over 4% of the required setback area. In addition, the area to the eastern portion of the site, southeastern portion, is also a landscaped area. That happens to be the detention facility for the development. It's also landscaped, and so there are no buildings there. So it effectively expands the Greenway even further into the site. In addition to that, there is significant open space between and around the various buildings of the site. The appellant made a number of comments in his presentation to the effect that this doesn't screen the garages and it doesn't screen the buildings. Well, there are no garages in this part of the development. The closest garage is probably 300 feet away. It's up in Phase 3, filing 3. So there are really, there are no structures in the encroachment area. There is an apartment over on the far western side that is near the fringe of the setback area, but the only other items that encroach, in fact, the only other item, is some parking spaces. There are no trash enclosures. There are no garages. There are no apartment buildings within the setback area. The existing Greenway provides some habitat. That's correct. But ERO's initial characterization indicated that it was patchy and it was of limited quality. The current wildlife that's in the area are the species that are adapted to a more urban environment. There'd be the foxes and the raccoons and maybe an occasional deer, some birds flying through, but they're not unique or sensitive species in any respect. This current wildlife that's there and the habitats that there are not threatened by this development any more than they're threatened by the pedestrians and the cyclists that are using the path, or the athletes that are on the adjacent track and sports field. This is an urban habitat, and nothing that this development is proposing will deteriorate from that. The proposed landscaping that will be implemented along the southern perimeter actually enhances and improves the Greenway. It provides a screening. It provides additional habitat. It provides a more effective buffer, and it extends the, or at least the Greenway. The fourth criteria has to do with quality and desirability of the mitigation, and the appellant claims that development is likely to diminish the quality of habitat for some species. Really, mitigation is defined as to alleviate, to lessen the severity of, or to moderate an impact. We acknowledge that there is a minor encroachment here, but it, again, as I said, it is entirely within the development property, not within the Greenway. The significant additional landscaping and screening berm will not only effectively lessen that impact, but it will also enhance the appearance of the Greenway. This will be, I think, the most highly landscaped view that you will see from this Greenway compared to the other developments that are on the, along the corridor, certainly compared to the school site, and even compared to the single-family residences that are further east. If you look at those, basically what you see is fences. This will be a much more natural environment that's compatible with the Greenway itself. The appellant addresses the overall aesthetics of the Greenway and claims that this development will have a negative impact on the overall aesthetics. Well, I think that the proposed development complies with the code by complementing the visual context of the area. We have, within the site itself, a varied orientation of the buildings. The buildings have, employ earth-tone colors. The, some renderings that you'll see in a minute or two here show that the developer is picking up on what planning and zoning commissioners have said to them. They have employed additional varied colors, different brick or stone, and we've also tied that into the landscaping that is in and around the buildings. So I believe that the landscaping that we're seeing is consistent, the development is consistent with the area, and rather than diminish the aesthetics, will actually enhance them. I want to move on now and talk about the architectural diversity. I touched on it a little bit before we go that far. That's a photo simulation of what this development will look like from the trail. You can see, actually, in the bottom right corner of the photograph, a piece of the pedestrian trail, and over mid-height on the left side is the underpass under Grand Bemidows Drive. So this sweeps along, and in this area, the trail is on the south side of the creek. You can sort of see the creek meandering through there. But you can see that these buildings are not an imposition on the vista that you get from walking along the from walking along the trail there. With respect to the architecture itself, the code requires that there be diversity throughout the buildings of a particular development. The appellant would want you to include diversity in all elements of the exterior architecture. And I think, you know, the purpose of the variance, as it stated in the code, is to alleviate practical difficulties arising out of strict application of code provisions in situations not caused by the applicant's act or omission. Strict application, in this case, would require significant structural changes to the design of the buildings, and would also require material revamping of the construction process. Now, we had a discussion about this at Planning and Zoning, and there was discussion about some prefabrication that goes on. These buildings are not cookie cutters, as I heard mentioned, but they are, I would call it modular to some extent, they're panelized, and the reason for doing that is to improve the efficiency of the construction. You get better quality control, you get better safety for the workers, they can build in a controlled environment, they can construct these panels on the ground, on a level surface, in an area that, you know, they're not climbing a ladder, standing on the trusses in the wind, what have you. There are significant benefits that are not strictly tied to the developer's profit. To change that now, at this last stage of this development, would put, I think, an unfair burden on the developer in this case. Diversity requirements included in the code during the period, they were included in the code during the period of build-out. As I said, this project has been ongoing for about 14 years now. There is diversity within the development itself. The buildings at the north end of the site are three-story buildings, there are 24-unit buildings, there are 16-unit buildings, there are 14-unit buildings. They have various orientations within the site, they have some different colors, they have different roof lines, they have different, some have shingles, or at least shutters, some don't. There's different entryway treatments. They're different, but they're consistent within this development. They're different than you would find next door at Clover Basin Village, and that's what identifies this as Grand View Meadows as opposed to Clover Basin Village. The developer is quite willing to make what changes they can, as I say, without redesigning the structure of the building, without redoing their construction process for a matter of a couple of buildings here. They have proposed, and so what we've got here are some elevations, and what you'll see, if you look at these very quickly, they look, they might look fairly similar because they are the same footprint, but if you look more closely, we have different colors, we have different brick. This one has a, simply a hip roof. If you look at the next one, there are, this one has a mix of a gable and a hip roof, again, different colors, this is a different color brick, this one has shutters on it, and then if you look at the next one, this has a stone fascia and a quite different roof line, a lot more gables in this roof, and again, a little different entry treatment on the doorways. So, there's things that we can do to make these a little bit different, and I think that's what Planning and Zoning saw when we talked about this at that hearing, was that there are things that can be done without starting from scratch. And I think this, they were satisfied this addresses the intent of the code, particularly in light of the longevity of this project, and the fact that a lot of it has been constructed, and they considered, I believe, it to be overly onerous to require that we strictly apply the code at this point. Finally, with respect to neighborhood compatibility, the issue is whether or not, or what the overall impact would be on the existing neighborhood, and I don't believe that the appellant actually spoke to this, but it was in his appeal letter that he felt that approval of more high-density development in this area would have a negative impact on property values, would increase crime, noise, the demand for services, ambient light, and it would result in an overall deterioration of the area. Well, I have to tell you that I don't think there's any factual basis to that. The zoning of this property has been included in the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan for a long time, far longer than this development has been processed, and it is zoned high-density residential. In fact, the density that we would have if you uphold this, the amendment to the PDP, is 18.7 dwelling units per acre. The original annexation agreement for this entire development allowed a density of 19 units per acre. The high-density residential zoning typically allows up to 30 dwelling units per acre. So, we are below the approved density, and we're well below the typical density for this type of a development. This developer, and I want to reiterate, is not building cookie cutter apartments, and he's not developing cookie cutter or bottom-line entry-level complexes. There's been significant contributions, both land-wise and financially, made by this developer over the years. You can see on the comprehensive plan here, the dark brown or the darker brown area that indicates the site is considerably smaller than it was when the land was purchased in 1995. The land originally extended south of Dry Creek to the area where the school playground and part of the sports field is now in the track. There was land dedicated for, not only for Grand View Meadows Drive and for, I'm trying to mind the street that cuts through the property, but also for the Dry Creek, for the school, and for general amenities. The developer, as I said, contributed approximately 75% more land than was required for his portion of Dry Creek in order to facilitate that. He paid for half of the greenway improvement costs, he paid for a portion of the pedestrian underpass costs, approximately $100,000 in value for each of those. To date, the parks and rec fees that are associated with the apartments that have been constructed amount to approximately $1.6 million, and if this final phase is approved, the additional parks and rec fees will amount to somewhere in the neighborhood of $500,000. So, this is not a developer who's just coming in and hitting and running. He's here to stay. The original developer continues to own and operate the property, as they do with their other properties throughout Colorado and other states, and they make a serious effort at being good neighbors, at being good citizens of the community. And I believe that the request that they've made for this amendment to the PDP is warranted, and I believe that the Planning and Zoning Commission approval is justified, and I would ask that you upheld that. Thank you.
Okay, I guess it's time for questions from all of us council members to either staff or... Okay, well, we should... Yeah, okay, yeah. We're going to open this up at this point, make it a public hearing if people signed up for it.
Captain, I want to make sure we enter this into the record, too.
So, it's Mary Powell, and during the public hearing, we're going to limit these to just three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Mary Powell with ERO Resources, 1842 Clarkson Street, Denver, Colorado. I'm just available for any answers you may have to questions, so let me know if you have any. Thanks.
Well, I do have one quick question. It seems like the riparian line, isn't that a moving target? I mean, those channels and stuff move, I mean, two years from now could be a different line, couldn't it?
It could be, it could be, but I think the city did a good job with that particular stream, that I think it's going to stay in place pretty well, but you're right. Any natural system is subject to change over time, so really, a lot of the work that we do is kind of a snapshot in time.
So, that's how the code works? We just pick a snapshot in time and say, here's the setbacks, here's the line now today, and then if it changed in the future, they don't have to like move their parking lot because now it's...
That I don't know. I haven't heard of that precedent before.
Just a thought.
It's similar. We do a lot of work with different kinds of vegetation mapping, and, you know, the reality is that conditions do change over time. You work with the best data you have available and go from there.
Okay. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. So, we just got to, we can't ask questions. Excuse me. Yeah. So, next up is Jerry Grep, you've got three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and council members. My name is Jerry Grep, and I live at 4140 Hawthorne Place, and I'd just like to make a couple of comments. The applicant stated that they are adding to the greenway, they're not subtracting from the greenway. They're adding visible park cars over two-thirds of their southern border, and they're berming a little bit of it to relieve the, just the area that they're impinging on the greenway. So, that was one of the points. And regarding cookie cutters, you saw the pictures, it's, they're cookie cutters, they just have different icing on them. And then finally, let's see, regarding the, if you, the approval for architectural variance, the quote in the approved, the approved document was, "Building architecture to have variations in color, stone, brick, etc." If the council doesn't reverse the decision of Planning and Zoning Commission, the council will circumvent the public review process because all the details of the architectural variance are going to be determined by only staff and the developer. There's no, it could be any more, I mean, there's not to be, this won't be reviewed by public meetings, by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, what's happening is you're setting a very bad precedent that this development will be not under public review, so please consider that in your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is George, Mark Miller. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public hearing that hasn't spoke on this? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Okay, now I guess it's time for us to ask questions of any staff or council member Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you, looking at the appeal procedure that we're going through, staff may rebut any additional evidence. Don, do you have anything to add? The question I have, you know, having been, I've been through one of these before, this is just a variance. We don't, this isn't setting precedent. Am I correct on this? I mean, this is, I mean, we're not rewriting code here.
Mayor Coombs, Mayor Potem Santos, first, I do have a couple of things I'd like to clarify when you do get to asking us for the rebuttal, but if you want to go through your questions first amongst all the council, that'd be preferred probably before we try to rebut anything.
Yeah, if you want to go through the rebuttals, that's fine.
And, but as far as, you know, when we're looking at a variance, every variance is a unique situation and is to be weighed on its own merits. So, by granting a variance, the evidence that's been entered is unique to a property, so it should not be used by any other to be considered as a precedent for any future variance by anybody else, unless they had the exact same situation, which would be very, 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 very rare.
Councilmember Bagley, do you want to ask a question?
Yeah, yeah, I've got a couple. The, I guess, first of all, who, so, yeah, you, you, you. Possibly. So, my question is, who are the, you are one of the experts, correct? On city staff, you are the other expert. Who's, who, who?
Steve Ranswiler.
There he is. All right. So, I've just got some quick questions. So, first of all, based on the proposal the developer put forth, you know, do you believe that what they put forward preserves and/or enhances that riparian area?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, Steve Ranswiler, Project Manager for Public Works and Natural Resources. Yes, in my opinion, I do believe that the line as delineated by ERO is accurate, and because of the grade changes through there, I do think that if the applicant were to move the parking lot back the 14 to 15 feet to the north, but deleted the excess vegetation, the extra vegetation and the berming, that that would be more of an impact with the lights from the cars that are headed in parking than there would be with the berm and the additional vegetation. I think that will be an enhancement to the greenway by what they're doing.
Okay. Second question for you. The scope of the development, how many units are going, how many buildings and units are going to be on this per acre compared to what is permitted under the comprehensive plan?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, I'm going to go off of what I believe I heard Larry say, which was, I know the comprehensive plan allows up to 30 units per acre in high-density residential, and I believe we're at 18.72 units to the acre with the current proposal adding into the existing development. So, the whole new development, if approved, would be at that new 18.72 units per acre.
All right, so if we take into consideration those conditions and the extent of the site changes, it's consistent with the scope of the development?
Yeah, it's consistent with the comp plan and the annexation agreement, that it's limited to 19 as a maximum, yes.
Okay, all right. Third question. This one is for, I didn't catch your name. Larry what?
Larry Owen.
Owen?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Owen. Do you have your conservation plan with you?
There is no conservation plan for this site because it does, there's nothing to conserve on the site itself. What we're doing is, we're constructing the development completely within the private property. None of it encroaches into an area that needs to be conserved. What we are encroaching into is the setback zone, which extends into a portion of the property.
Okay, I guess my question is, one of the criteria, the conservation plan demonstrates an absence of wildlife species or existing or potential wildlife habitat, as you pointed out, along the river or stream quarter or riparian area. And so, you did a great job arguing that, yeah, the wildlife habitat along the river or stream isn't being impacted, but there's still 14 feet of riparian area. So, my question is, I mean, I mean, what's the demonstration? I guess I'm just giving, the question is, have you demonstrated, can you show me or us where you've demonstrated that there is an absence of wildlife species? Did you have an expert? Did you go out there?
ERO did a natural resource assessment initially, then subsequently, as part of the original submittal. They subsequently went out and delineated the riparian area, and we use that as the basis for establishing where the setback zone would be. Their initial natural resource assessment characterized the development site and also the habitat or potential habitat within the greenway itself, so, and the dividing line is the property line of the building, of the billing site. As it happens, the delineation of the... As it happens, the delineation of the riparian area in the western portion of the, the greenway, just, just east of Grand View Meadows Drive, uh, is in a location that when you add the hundred-foot setback from that riparian boundary, it enters into the property. So there's a portion of the property that is overlapped by that, that, uh, bit of the, the hundred-foot buffer zone. But there is no construction or development in the greenway itself.
Right, but there still is fourteen feet of riparian area.
No, no, there's no riparian area that's being impacted, just the setback.
Just the setback.
That's, that's the buffer between the riparian area and, and any hardscape.
So your argument in this case, so your, your explanation is river, stream, riparian areas aren't being impacted at all?
Correct.
Is that true? Would you agree with that? Okay. And then last but not least, um, uh, is what being done, is what, is what they're, this is for you, and then also for you, I'd like to hear from you both. Um, are they, what's being presented, providing a higher quality and more desirable wildlife habitat enhancement along the corridor? It's similar to the question I asked before, but I'm just going through the elements here that we have to decide.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, um, Steve Ranswiler, Public Works Natural Resources. The, uh, I would say that the landscaping that they are providing, um, along their southern boundary, um, is, yeah, it's an enhancement to the greenway. Anything would be, uh, rather than the, the, uh, the bare ground they have right now. It's, you know, certainly, um, having the, uh, infrastructure closer to the greenway, there is a, a level of impact, but I believe that that is addressed through the berming and the additional vegetation. If, if I may, um, I just wanted to give you a little bit of history about the setback. When, when the city passed the, uh, the open space sales tax, what, ten, twelve years ago, um, we put together an open space and trails master plan and a wildlife management plan. And in the wildlife management plan was the recommendation for setbacks. So we weren't getting parking lots and things right up against our, uh, our riparian and, uh, wildlife quarters, our primary greenways. So that's where the setback came from. Uh, as Mr. Owen mentioned, there isn't any impact to the riparian area here. There isn't any impact to the wetlands here. There isn't any impact to the greenway here, except from the fact that they are proposing to have the parking lot a little bit closer to the greenway than what is currently permitted by code. So that's the variance they're, they're really asking for. And, and as far as the conservation plan you mentioned before, uh, this area is a little bit unique in that the city built the greenway before the development. Typically, uh, the city wouldn't build or develop the greenway. Um, we would wait for the developer to do it. In this case, the, in order for Silver Creek High School to be built, we worked with the school district back in two thousand to build the regional detention facility, which changed the floodplain for the school site as well as for this property. They also rechanalized the creek along here, built the greenway improvements. The, the city reimbursed the school district for this portion. The developer then reimbursed the city for their portion as they developed closer to the greenway. So the conservation work was done back when that project was done, which is why there isn't anything required right now.
All right, because I just wanted to point out, I mean, the reason I asked the questions is legally it says, "The following criteria shall be used," and that's the criteria. So, uh, then the, then I guess the other, the other issue that comes before us is...
Yeah, I'll do that. Give me two, two minutes and I'll, I'll do that for you, Mayor Protem, and everyone smiles. I would move that we extend the moving, uh, we agree to extend the meeting past eleven. To the rest of our agenda. You're welcome, Mayor Protem Santos.
I'm not going to vote, but I do. Is that point of order? We're in the middle of a quasi judicial proceeding. That, that, that is the only reason.
Yeah.
Come on, Kate, put on your bow in here.
Okay. Meeting's extended. Seven to zero.
So, and then the last, the last thing that we're looking at is, I lied though, that was about, that was about riparian areas. And then last but not least, um, give me an example of what, what would be required, what, what, what would be a, if they wanted to go further, if we say that this was not, uh, if the design and aesthetics were not contributing to the, uh, the aesthetics of the area pursuant to fifteen oh five oh two oh K, what, what would we require? If this doesn't meet that standard, what has been done in the past to make it blend in?
Are you referring to the architectural variance?
Yeah, I mean, what? It really depends on, I think, what's been done in the past. Is the, uh, what? I don't have any frame of reference.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, um, the, the only other project I've worked on where we've done an exception of this, uh, the standard was the Harvest Junction South development, uh, with the Lowe's and, uh, all of the development there along the Left Hand Creek. And they also encroach into the setback. Um, some of the things that we looked at, again, is what was talked about here, was some of the changes in grade, but then with their design of their buildings at that time, they were seen as an improvement over what could have been done, um, per code. So they, they tried to address the four-sided architecture. They tried to use enhanced materials on those buildings to try to make those some really nice buildings. And so in that case, that, that was found to meet the standard. Um, the thing to, I guess, keep in mind is that staff did not recommend approval of the architectural variance, uh, for this project. The planning commission approved it with, with that. So we really didn't make a finding that this standard K had been met, at least from an architectural standpoint. But the architectural is not within the area that's being asked for the variance. It's the parking lot.
Uh, this is a de-noble hearing, meaning that we not, I mean, P and Z's interesting to read, but you get the final say. So my question is, what's your opinion on the architecture? What was, what was the original staff recommendation?
It was that it not, the variance not be approved, that it did not meet the intent of the architectural standards in our land development code and did not warrant and did not meet the criteria for granting the variance.
Interesting. Why?
Uh, if you have another question, I can look that up real quick and tell you specific sections.
I've got another question. Let me look that up real quick.
So, under section, it'd be on page six of the Planning and Zoning Commission packet, if you're interested. It's section fifteen point zero two point zero six zero F six. We could not find compliance with uh, B two. The variance, the proposed variance presents an alternative site or development design that, number two, represents an improvement in quality over what could have been accomplished through strict application of the standard. Because of strict application of the standard, we felt was meant to provide variation in buildings specifically, uh, not just, uh, minor changes, but actually make them look different. And the other uh, would be F in that same review criteria. The, the decision body grants a variance, it shall be considered the least deviation from the regulations that will afford relief because they were asking for it for all of the buildings. We felt that that was a hundred percent variance. That was not asking for a percentage of them to only meet the new standard. And so therefore, we could not support it because of those two criteria not being met.
So your answer on that one is that technically, so what you're saying is they meet all the criteria under the riparian, but in your opinion, in staff's opinion, the, uh, architecture, site design, et cetera, was not necessarily, uh, compliant with how you read the code?
For the architecture, not specifically K.
Right.
Right.
Correct. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Samory?
Just a point of clarification on the setback. That is within the property that they own, correct?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Samory, yes, it is on private property.
Okay, so the extension or the encroachment that they're doing on the setback is actually on their own property?
That is correct.
Okay.
Setback extends into private property. It's, it's regardless of property lines, it's just a hundred-foot setback from the edge of riparian area. And this situation does extend into the private property.
So instead of it being a hundred foot, it's going to be eighty or seventy or whatever it is?
Yeah, eighty plus, eighty to seventy-five.
As I recall from the planning and zoning meeting, uh, and I, I screw up my directions frequently. So east of the development, there were homes that are built that are actually closer to the riparian area than what's required.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Samory, that is correct. Those were built under previous code requirements, and yes, they are closer than that. There is improvements within the hundred-foot setback east of this area.
Okay. So the improvements that they're suggesting, um, where they extend onto their own property are in some, are still probably a greater distance than some of the other homes that are further down east?
That is possible. I don't know that for a fact. That is possible, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we have, um, staff gets to, um, um, appeal or, um, their case. And then the, uh, appellate gets to appeal, and then the applicant gets to appeal. So could we maybe try to limit this to, since it's getting so late, maybe five minutes for each rebuttal?
Mayor Coombs, I, I don't have anything else to offer unless you have questions of me. I think I've adequately addressed the, um, the concerns, and, and I think that the applicant and the appellate, um, both conveyed points accurately, so.
How about you, Don? Do you want to weigh in here for?
So, uh, Mayor Coombs, I would like to offer, um, that from staff's review of the land development code, we do believe that the riparian area was designated appropriately, that the wetlands fall within the riparian area, and that the setback line was delineated appropriately by ERO, and that Steve and I did visit the site and walked where they had staked that, and that we believed and still do that that was an accurate depiction of where the riparian area existed at that time. And so that is, that's all that I wanted to enter into the record.
So I guess, uh, Mark, are you still here? Would you like to? Pardon? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I guess the question I'd have is, is if, if I'm the only one that's wrong, why are we planting wetland seed mix all over that area that's outside the riparian area? Why did we pay for that? I mean, it doesn't take a degree in watershed management to understand what that greenbelt looks like. By the way, I have a degree in watershed management. So while we're all comparing notes, I think I can go out there and tell you without a shadow of a doubt that we're, we're wrong. If you follow staff's recommendation, if you follow the ERO report about the limit of this riparian area, we're not following the code. We're not following the intent of the code. We're not protecting and enhancing. Why, why is there a setback, a hundred-foot setback from riparian areas to begin with? Well, it's private property. Well, you know, it's his property. He can do what he wants with it. Well, why is it in the code contrary to that? I, if you don't like the code, change the code. There's a plan to do that. But trying to fit a square peg in a round hole is not good decision-making. So again, why is wetland, why were wetland plants planted all over that greenbelt? Why is the greenbelt a hundred and thirty feet wide? I've measured it. It's a hundred and eighty feet wide in places. When I see it, Don, can we pull up the pictures, please? When I see it, I know what that greenbelt is. I know what the open space is, and I know it should be protected. Okay? What, what you're seeing here is, uh, uh, we're, we're drawing a line that's about, I don't know, six to ten feet from the center line of that ditch, right, from the Dry Creek's stream bed. It's a ditch. It's been improved. The generosity of the developer, right? Those were all conditions of his development approval, right? Makes, makes, you know, want to make him out to be, uh, Chris Kringle. He's not. Right? So the point of this is, if you believe that the greenbelt in the riparian area are a hundred and thirty feet as it was originally, uh, developed, then that, that setback line is going to extend an additional sixty-five feet into this area of development. So it's not fifteen feet. It'll be much larger, which means the parking is in question, which means the buildings are in question. Okay, there's, there's pictures as the site appeared, you know, two days ago before the snow. Uh, so it'll give you an idea of whether or not there are, and this is, again, this is phase three, right? So this is already approved. There are going to be five additional buildings in addition to what's being built there, and that's not complete in terms of their construction. So the, the building you see in that photograph there is actually, there's going to be another one, and then another one closer to the greenbelt in front of that. Can we, can you cycle through those? That's a view from the greenbelt. There's your scenic corridor. I don't see the landscape screening. That's what I'm talking about. It may not be something that you agree with, but it's in the code. It's a condition of the variance in the code. And there it is. You're going to have two more buildings to the left of that one. That's a view from the greenbelt. Another one, please? There you go. Now, where's the riparian area? You know, are we really, we're, we're going to define this whole code, this whole riparian setback for, for twelve feet on either, either side of the bank? And that's got to be skinny wildlife. I don't believe anybody believes that. So I'm asking you to defend what's in the code, protect the open space that we value as a community, protect, you know, protect our views. Again, it's in the code. Um, you know, if we, if we, if we could have gone backwards and lost one of these buildings and pushed some of this parking back and landscape screened the entire length of that southern boundary, we probably have a deal here. The developer wasn't interested in that. I don't know why ERO is giving you a bogus report. I don't know why city staff is, but it doesn't matter. The decision is on you. Thanks.
Okay, I guess the applicant then has a five minutes to rebuttal.
I guess my first approach would be to ask ERO if they'd like to defend their bogus report. I think that's, that's pretty demeaning, and, and I'm, I'm going to try to avoid the sarcasm while I'm up here. Um, why is there a setback? There's a setback to provide, provide a buffer so that, as Steve said, we don't have development coming right up to the boundaries of the riparian vegetation. The, the, the city, uh, staff and, and their consultants in their wisdom said, "We would like this buffer, and we think a hundred feet is appropriate in, in some of these areas, in, in the larger areas, um, or the more prominent, uh, watercourses." Uh, the, um, the buffer was set at a hundred and fifty feet, I believe. That's a decision that they made, but it, it's a buffer. Uh, that's not to say that the riparian area grows right to the edge of the buffer. It purposely doesn't. The, the buffer is there to, to provide a separation. Uh, the question was asked, why were wetland plants planted, uh, throughout or specified to be planted throughout the greenway area? We're not sure they were, to be honest with you. That, that plan is, is twelve years old. Um, but if they were planted, it's possible that they didn't survive because there's no water up there. There's a significant grade change between the creek level and, and the edges of, of the, the greenway, either north or south of the creek. There's been mention made or reference, allegations made, that only the east, the western third of the southern perimeter is being landscaped. That's not true. If, I may, I don't know whether we can go back to it quickly, but there's landscaping along the entire south perimeter of the site, the eastern two-thirds of which is a detention basin, which has no garages, no trash enclosures, no parking in it. It's still landscaped, and, and that landscaping is there. In the western third to a half, if I look at it, it's getting pretty close to a half of the, the western, uh, portion of that southern perimeter, there's additional landscaping. of the western portion of that southern perimeter, there's additional landscaping. So that additional landscaping is the mitigation for the fact that we have some parking proposed within the setback zone. And so it's not that we're not landscaping any of it. In fact, if you could zoom out another couple thousand feet, which you can't, but, I mean, you can see immediately to the east of the property, along the southern boundary of the, of the Culver Basin Village, it's like, there's no landscaping. There are a few, a few pine trees in there, but it is sparsely landscaped compared to what's being proposed here, and we're proposing additional landscaping to mitigate the encroachment into the setback area. And then, finally, with reference to the photograph that we saw of the buildings under construction, there will not be two more buildings south of the ones that were pictured. There will be one. And in all honesty, a picture taken yesterday or the day before isn't going to show any landscaping. A, the project isn't finished, and the landscaping will be the last thing that's done, and B, it's the middle of winter. I think that's, oh, and I guess one more thing. Don, you made reference to the, the conditions that were imposed by, by planning and zoning with respect to the architectural variance. They wanted to see changes in color and in brick and stone. The developer has gone beyond that and said, we'll make some roof changes, too. And I think in three examples that we showed you of the proposed elevations, we have a pure gable roof, we have a mixed gable and hip roof, and we have a fully hip roof. So I think the developer is indicating their intent to comply and to show good faith without necessarily going through the structural changes that might otherwise be warranted. Thank you.
Okay, I guess we're at the point where we need to discuss and make a decision. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Don, the original PZR, the original recommendation from staff was the PZR with the one that the applicant agreed to build a berm at least three feet high, correct? With the fifty percent? At least fifty percent of all shrubs? And I'm just condensing.
Yes.
The PZR that planning and zoning approved included that, plus the building architecture to have variations in color, stone and brick, et cetera.
That's correct.
They added that.
That's correct.
That wasn't your recommendation?
No.
Just for clarification, in case, after all that. That was a five to two vote. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Levinson?
So I, I want to commend everybody for being very well-prepared and putting everything together so thoroughly for the council to consider. I, you know, I'm not convinced about the berm, frankly. I was sitting here thinking what three feet looks like, and three feet is maybe about the height of the desk, and then I'm thinking what, you know, an F-150 truck size is, and, you know, the lights are more than three feet. And unless you're going to put a lot of really dense shrubbery that's all going to survive, I still think that in that setback area, having those, those parking spaces, the berm is really not going to be enough. So I'm not really convinced that the berm is the mitigation that's going to solve the lighting, the problem of the lighting encroaching and the view of parked cars and from the Greenway. So I support Mr. McCree's position and argument about the setback. You know, frankly, if you're going to, is privately owned, but the argument that the setbacks are therefore reason, you know, what's to say, you know, next week, the compelling argument, or next month, that, you know, we can be fifty feet closer and just build a higher berm? So do you end up with, you know, basically berming fifteen feet so you can get really close, and it looks like the Greenway a butt's a mountain? You know, it can get to the point of ridiculousness. I'd prefer to not have the encroachment on, on the setback, and I also agree with staff's recommendation that the, the code standard was not met on the variation of the building. Again, people are going to see these buildings, you know, daily, and I think that there are some parts of the city where having an enhanced, well, I think that the appellant's point that the code, the variation for the code, and it's demonstrated by staff's example of Harbors Junction, that they went above and beyond the code because they knew they were impacting a sensitive view area. And I think that, Don, you proved your point there, as staff's position, and it also supports the appellant's position. So I'll let everybody else weigh in, but I would like to see this sent back to the drawing board for some further work.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Kind of where I stand on this is, I, regardless of, I think, regarding the riparian setbacks, the evidence we heard, experts, et cetera, based on what the code reads, the following criteria shall be used, I don't see how we can decide that the setback variance is inappropriate. My concern, however, has to do with what's at issue here regarding the design of the buildings. One of my big problems with Longmont is when you drive through town and you go, who the heck designed this neighborhood? How did this get through? All the houses look the same, you know, the little lampposts out front, and I'm like, sorry, sorry, the council member with. You know, and I sit there, and I sit there and think, I go, I go, couldn't, couldn't we have just a little foresight and thought? And so my concern is that, that just the buildings themselves, they are cookie cutter. I mean, I hear what you said, but at issue here, one of, one of the appellant's concerns was that it didn't meet that criteria. That's where I've kind of got my hangup, that it's just one more cookie cutter neighborhood. So that's kind of where I'm at, where I'd like to see it follow staff recommendations. I'm not real concerned about the variance in the setback in riparian areas, though.
Councilmember Samori?
So the changes that they've made to the design of the outside of the buildings and the roof lines, would that change your recommendation today?
Again, Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Samori, you know, when we as, when we as staff work with all kinds of developers, we try to reach some kind of a middle ground to where our standard that we try to apply is, can a typical person who does not do the kind of work we do, could they look at that building and tell that it's the same as the next one to it? And that's kind of our test. I don't know that this would pass that test. That, that's, that's, that's truly in my mind, when I read the intent, and I go back and I look, and when I talked to Phil DeVeckio when he was here about the task force that worked on these regulations, that was the concern of what Councilmember Bagley said. Is it the same or not? Is it, does it look the same? That was kind of the eye test. And that's what these regulations were trying to do, is to break it up. And right now, I personally don't know that a person who is not in the building field or planning or, or the development area would look at those two or three buildings and say they're not the same. Again, that's, that's our test. That, I would defer right now to say, no, I still don't think it's completely all the way there.
So what would they need to do to get it all the way there?
I haven't played an architect on TV for a long time, so, let me pull up the... So on the screen right now, we've got one of the examples. So we, we do have the roof line, we have the materials. Those are, those are things that typically we look at, but then we also look at trying to do things with, trying to change the facade itself. So sometimes we'll add bump outs and things that will, for example, project or recess an area back. Sometimes we'll talk about if we know there's a common corridor or hallway, that that's an area maybe where you can shift the foundation a little bit to make, push that portion of a building back. Another area would look more to, to be in front of it. It may still be the same building, but you can do some roof lines, things like that, along those fenestrations that'll allow you to break that building up. You know, it's, it's hard with, with these kind of buildings. I mean, it is an apartment building. It is hard to do that. And for the developer to meet the code probably to the letter, you would have to come up with at least two different kinds of buildings and then build two different kinds of buildings. So again, that's my opinion.
I haven't been out there to visit the site. The previous buildings that were built, how similar are they to these in particular? Or are they, are these much more different than the others?
They, they are different, and that's one of the things that was talked about by the applicant, both here and at Planning and Zoning Commission. If you looked at this as a continuation of the original development, then there were three-story buildings, there were other sized buildings that had different unit counts in them, and those buildings are different. They are apartment buildings, and they have a theme, a common theme through the development because you want that as well. But they are different. And so if you looked at it from that standpoint of the whole development, then that is one way that you could. But from, at least from my standpoint, when I'm reviewing the code, I have to look at this as a new development. This, this single filing is a new development because that's what they, what it is. That's what I have to look at. But that doesn't mean that you could not look at that as, as counsel.
But when was the original, I think the original development was approved in the mid-'90s?
The, in late '90s, mid to late '90s, yes. It was prior to the current code going into effect in 2001.
And was this section of the development part of that original approval?
It was, although it was shown as open space.
Because of?
Flood plane.
But if we look at it as a continuation of the development, you're saying that they are different?
They, they are different, yes.
Okay.
They're different.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, that was an interesting conversation because that changed my mind. Because I was going to go with the original recommendation. Because I believe that the setbacks between, you know, I know Steve does good work. So I don't believe that he does shoddy work, and I really take offense when people say that, and, because I know we have good members of staff here. I can't say that for ERO, I'm sorry. So, but, you know, I, I can, I, I know what our, our staff goes through and the training they do. I wasn't too sure regarding the the PZR, the past, especially with the building, the, the building architecture and variations in color and brick. Wasn't too sure about that. But if you look at it, and I just happened to drive by there several times this weekend on my way, way to my wife's office, and I looked in, and they, they are very much different. But if you look, but if you do look at it as a whole parcel of a grand complex, these were, these are much different than the whole thing. It's not, I don't, I would not see it as a separate filing, separate filing, but a continuation of an existing one. I would be, I would, I would approve the, the PZR as, as planning and zoning came up with it. Again, the experts have made, made the case, at least for the setbacks, and you just, that conversation you and Councilmember Samori just had just completely changed my thought process regarding the, how that came about. So, thanks.
Well, I guess I'll weigh in here. I kind of agreed with Don, though, the way he's got to look at it, it's, he doesn't look at it as a whole project, but just this by itself. And because of that distinction, I have a hard time kind of agreeing with the previous. I mean, it's, it's a tough way to look at it, but it's, I have to put myself in Don's shoes and look at it from his perspective. It kind of makes sense that maybe a little bit more work needs to be done to make these things look a little bit different. Councilmember Bailey?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just wanted to weigh in. I, I am in agreement with Councilmember Santos in that I think the case that the, the riparian setback, I think they've made the correct, you know, legal. If you, it's pretty much cut and dry as far as the, the modifications to how they look. They're completely different than the other ones that are in the area. So I, I just would agree with the, the decision that planning and zoning made.
Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm also looking at some of the comments by the planning and zoning commissioners. If people want to look, it's page 695 on the packet numbers on the bottom of the electronic copy. It's page five of the planning and zoning discussion minutes, talking about the, the parking spaces and encroaching on the setback. It seemed that a couple of the commissioners suggested a reconfiguration of the parking spaces, and what Mr. Owens' reply was that, you know, that the setback or the variance was really necessary to provide convenience of the location of the parking, a few more feet closer to a building, and was not seeming to be that interested in maybe changing some design with the parking lot. So again, I think that, you know, if we send this back to the drawing board, there might be a little bit more creativity around fitting in the parking spaces and not having to encroach on the setback, which I think would be a win for the public because the purpose of the setbacks is really to give that additional buffer. And, and it may not be a bad thing to see if we can't come to a better resolution on this. So, you know, I guess I disagree with the planning and zoning decision in, in both, both the issues, on the, the issue with the variance on the setback and berming things up, and, and also for the architectural aesthetic.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, knowing, knowing all those planning and zoning commissioners and how they vote, that's an interesting vote, that five to two. Those five commissioners are very different, and the two are very different in their perspectives and their, in their life. So I move to uphold the decision of the planning and zoning commission.
Councilmember Samori?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, being that I'm the liaison to the planning and zoning commission, and I heard the discussion that they had, I think they were very thoughtful in, in the questions that they asked, in the liberation that they had afterwards, in, in the questions that they asked of the applicant and listening to the people that weren't necessarily in support of it. So when they came to the final decision, they took everything into consideration, and they... they made, for them, what, what was the right decision. And for us to second-guess them would be like second-guessing staff at times. They give the recommendation, they made the changes that they thought were appropriate so that the buildings would be different, that they would incorporate different materials, different colors, different textures, based on their understanding of the code and what the requirement would be. So I would support the decision that they made because I think they deliberated quite a bit, and they struggled with it, but they finally came to the right decision.
Go ahead, Dean.
Mayor and Council, two points of clarification. One, I understood that you were going to incorporate all exhibits into the administrative record, so the applicant's PowerPoint and presentation will be part of the record. And second, clarification of Mayor Potem's motion is that to adopt the resolution upholding the PNZs. Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor. I think that I, I would agree that on, on the basis of the riparian setback, I think I don't have any questions about that. I do have concerns about the cookie cutter nature, and I would like to see it go back and have those things addressed and, and have the developer work with the neighbors more closely. I think that the door was left open with the, the, is that the correct terminology? That there, there's a way to mitigate concerns on the neighbors' behalf, and I, I would, I would like to say that the eye test is subjective, but if it causes concern enough for our staff, I, I think that I would like to see that looked at once again. So I think I'm gonna vote no and hope that, that the two, that the developer can work more closely with the neighbors.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I echo Councilmember Witt to a T. I'm also gonna vote no, and then would hope that someone makes a motion, myself or whoever, that we instruct the developer that they go back and, riparian stuff's okay, but I want to see staff's recommendation followed according to what, the difference in the, in the facade, architectural design, et cetera, so it more closely adheres to the code, and working with the neighbors would be good. That's, that's how I'm gonna vote.
So we have a motion. I guess we should vote on that motion now. Mr. Mayor?
Is it permissible for me to interject something at this point prior to your vote?
Yeah.
Or not?
Yeah. There's a motion on the floor, so I guess it wouldn't be appropriate right now. Yeah.
Mayor and Council, I think you should vote on the motion, and then if you want to, right, reopen public hearing, allow for additional testimony, that, that would be at the council's discretion.
Okay. Okay, we're voting on the motion.
So no, yeses? Polls?
Yeah.
It's after eleven people. The definition is no.
So it fails with Councilmember Bagley, Councilmember Levinson, Councilmember Coombs, and Councilmember Witt descending. Councilmember Bagley?
I would move that we instruct, I would move that we instruct the applicant to go back and focus on.
That's one of our options.
Sure, sure, it doesn't matter whether the option is, the thing is, it's, yeah, the thing is that it's that issue. It is, well, do we have to send it back to PNZ? That's not what happened. This is a D-NOVO review. PNZ's out of it.
Our options are right here laid out for us.
I know it's written in the packet, but what I'm saying is, my understanding is, this is a D-NOVO review. PNZ doesn't, PNZ.
I'm not saying to send it back to PNZ.
My understanding is, my understanding is, we, my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. May, is that there are issues here, or there are, the appellant has brought up items that are now at issue, and we can, based on those, give instruction to the developers so they don't run around in circles saying, "This is what we want to see." And it comes back to council, does it not?
But if you read item number three, it's basically reverse the decision of Planning and Zoning, which is what we want to do, with the findings that the preliminary plat and preliminary development plan do not comply with the review criteria.
Correct. And so what, correct, but, but giving, giving direction specifically which ones do not comply, unless they want to keep coming back again and again and again and again, you know? So, hold on, let me, let me read verbatim to make it easy. Same page. I move.
Right, yes, just in a way to say, why don't we give them an opportunity to talk before we make another motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The what?
Yep.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. I'll keep it shorter than that. Excuse me. Larry Owen, again. It's my understanding that council is not satisfied with the architectural appearance. We would like to propose to substitute two of the buildings out of, so right now there is five 16-unit buildings proposed. We are willing to take two of those and make them 14-unit buildings, which will change the footprint, change the architecture, change the parking. Some of the parking that's currently encroaching can go away. Basically, we can give up three parking spaces per building, so we could give up six of those parking spaces that are currently encroaching, make some more open space in there, and we would have different appearing buildings. There would still be some encroachment, but it seems to me that that wasn't such an issue as, as the architecture. And so that's, that's an offer that we will make at this point if we can move forward. I think one of the options that you have is to approve with conditions, and.
That's a good idea.
And so I'd like to present that as.
As an option.
As an option for you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Mayor, Council. First and foremost, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Santos. No reason, no need to offend, or it wasn't my intent to offend staff. I apologize if I did that. I know how hard Steve works. I know how hard ERO works. I work equally as hard, and I have a different opinion on that issue. So I'm not sure what you guys passed and what you didn't pass. And what I think I'd like to do is not, I don't want to hold the developer up, but I don't want to make any harsh decisions here either. This has been a long process for everybody, and I would appreciate the opportunity to review plans that show us what these differences look like. I would also like to have an opportunity to investigate what he might be able to do to help us landscape screen. Those are, those are issues that we've had on the table since the outset. So while I appreciate his interest in going forward quickly, I'm not sure what motion has been passed. I'm not sure what the legality of that is. What, what was four to three? There was no motion?
We just defeated the, we reversed.
Okay, and I guess I, I would like to know what the legal impact of that is.
That's what he's gonna challenge us.
Right, before we decide on another motion, I want to know where we stand right now, right? That would be my request, I guess. Appreciate it.
Yeah, clarifying that.
Mayor and Council, so the motion was to uphold the PNZ's decision. That was defeated three to four. Sounds like there's additional discussion from council and a possible additional motion. Reviewing the Longmont Municipal Code about the options available to council, it is to either uphold, modify, or reverse the decision-making bodies' action. So that would be the PNZ's action. So I'm not sure what Councilmember Bagley was proposing fits within, or how that fits within those three options. There is also, one, one last thing, another option for council to consider is to continue this hearing. May give the opportunity for the developer to come, provide additional information. I think we would want to reopen the, the public hearing, allow the parties in interest to present additional argument and evidence. He is making a verbal proposal to go to two 14-unit buildings. I think it would be reasonable to, to be able to take a look at that and see how it might meet the architectural variance standard, and so that's just another option for council to consider.
Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, that's what I was going, that's what I was thinking to suggest, because my question was, if, if we wanted some, if we wanted this to be rereviewed, we wouldn't send it back to Planning and Zoning to rereview it, would we? With different direction, even if we did the modification, we wouldn't send it back to them. All right, so what I would like to do is move that we continue this, or take, we take, leave some additional time for continued negotiation with the developer and make sure that the applicant is, the appellant is kept informed of the process, and then work on the process and bring it back to us, say, within, I guess, when, after the next regular meeting, when, that would be about a month's time if we don't do it on the 22nd of April. Do you want a specific time or just when things happen?
Mayor and Council, I would recommend a date certain.
Okay.
The meeting's so long, my battery has died on my computers, I can't look at what the next appropriate meeting might be, regular session.
April 22nd, I think, is the next regular session, but the regular session following that? Or, I know May 21st is one of those big days, too, that we've got big agenda items. April 23rd, yeah, okay.
That's a regular session or not?
Okay. And so the one following May 7th would be the 21st of May? It's a month. So I, so I would suggest that we look at May 21st to bring this item back to council. And so do we need to continue, we would also add to continue this item over to May 21st. So that's my, my motion to continue this item over to May 21st to allow time for the appellant and applicant and staff to work on what they can come up with for a resolution following council discussion.
Why can't we just, Dean, there's going to be a question for you, just to modify the decision of Planning and Zoning with the additional conditions that the applicant just talked about with the two different building styles, the best units, couldn't we just?
Make them look like.
Well, we can make conditional that we move it down, or?
Mayor and Council, that is certainly an option for council, is to modify with conditions.
I redraw my second.
I did thirds, so I'll draw the second. I say we'll do it on the 21st.
There was a second, yeah. Okay, so I guess we got to vote on that, that motion.
Can you repeat the motions?
Coming back on the May 22nd.
Levinson moved to continue this hearing to, to May 21st to allow continued negotiation with the developer and keep the applicant, appellant informed.
Let's vote.
Wow, I could be the tiebreaker. I'm gonna deal with this tonight.
Okay, here we go, let's do it.
Okay.
All right, so who's gonna go out and do the drawings?
I guess I'll make the motion that we modify the decision of Planning and Zoning Commission with the additional conditions to include, to change the building style of two of the buildings, and then reducing the number of units in those two buildings from 16 to 14, and then changing the parking situation to get a little bit more setback, and then bring that plan back to council for final approval.
That's basically the same thing you just said.
No.
But that's what you gave service for, May 23rd.
Yeah.
Mayor and Council, so what I'm thinking is, I, I would like to be able to draft the resolu, or modify the resolution here to incorporate your condition so that you're approving a written resolution. If we can get some sort of consensus that this is the direction that council wants to go, perhaps we could move on the agenda, come back, finish this up. I can draft a written resolution, and you can consider that.
Councilmember Samori?
Mr. Owens. How quickly could you come back with the changes that you're proposing?
I apologize for delaying. I'd have to check with the architect to see what his schedule looks like. We would make every effort to turn it around, you know, in, in a couple of weeks. We can change the site plan pretty quickly because that's within my control. The architectural stuff is a different person. We could do that. We could come back to council. We could deal with staff.
So, Don, what would the process be once they make the changes?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Samori, so there, there's, there's two options, I guess. The one is that it, it comes back, and then you look at it and you decide whether or not that meets the intent of the code requirements for diversity, and you could approve it. Another option would be that staff could look at the regulation, review the two buildings against it. If we believe that it's met it, then we could approve it. To Mr. McGarry's point, that takes the public review out of it, but this wouldn't be the first time that we've had this as, as a condition to make sure that it meets the code requirement. The problem is that if what they turn in doesn't meet the code requirement, that's where I don't know where the appeal would go, if it would come back here, or if it would go to Planning Commission. I, I don't know. Sorry.
Well, I kind of like that option because then it's, you guys make the decision whether it meets that code or not, and then if it, if it's in the gray area, it comes back here.
You know it's coming right back here.
I don't know.
Without seeing the, the buildings that they're proposing, I can't say that they are or aren't. I mean, they would be.
I can guarantee it's coming back here.
Okay.
The appellant is not going to be happy regardless of how this is.
Councilmember Samori?
When is our next regular meeting?
Is it the 23rd of April?
Do you think you would be ready by the 23rd of April?
We'll be ready.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I had a motion, but it hadn't been seconded, so-
So the motion we're making is that my, my original motion, but instead of May 21st, add the date of April 23rd.
Okay.
Me.
Okay, I'll second her, Morrison.
Yeah. So it's a previous motion, but the change is the date is April 23rd.
Okay, and I'll second it. Let's vote on it.
I just want to make sure Mr. McCreary is here. I mean, I just want, I'm not asking you to come down and speak, all I'm saying is I want to make sure that he's, that the public is, you know, and the reason I'm saying is that if staff approves it, I just know he's gonna be back, he's gonna be back before us. That way he has, that's why, that's why we're bringing it back to 23rd. No, 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 that's what I'm just saying. It's announced Tuesday, April 23rd.
Okay. All right.
There's a second, yeah.
I will keep you informed.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, pass is seven to zero. That was brutal.
Okay, Mayor Coombs, your next item is the Longmont General Improvement District Resolution.
Okay.
You'll need to recess as soon as you can.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we recess as Longmont City Council and reconvene as the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero, so we're now the Longmont General Improvement District.
And this is Resolute and LGID 200301, Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One, Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Longmont Downtown Development Authority for Administration Services. I don't think there's a staff presentation, but Jim Goldin's here to address questions.
Okay. Is there any questions? Councilmember Samori?
No questions, I would just move the motion. Or motion to move it.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we adjourn as the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One and reconvene as the Longmont City Council.
All right, let's vote on that. Okay, we're back to being Longmont City Council. Passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your last item is Resolution R 201336, A Resolution of the Longmont City Council Establishing Fee for Cash in Lieu of Water Rights Transfers. Looks like Dale Radamaker is here to make that presentation.
Thank you, Dale Radamaker, Director of Public Works and Natural Resources. We'll keep it quick tonight. I think I briefed you on this issue a couple of weeks ago. It's, it relates to an escalating price of water along the Front Range, an action of the Longmont Water Board, which is one of their core responsibilities, which is to review the market on water rights and to make a recommendation to city council with regards to where the cash in lieu price should appropriately be set. Our current code lists how that's to be done, and, and it's on page nine, 10 of your packet, essentially that the basis for their recommendation is the current market value with purchase of the units of Colorado becomes in water. Your packet includes information with regards to what those costs are, specifically on page nine, 17, and then, which, which, which does show an escalating price, in particular in the month of March. And we also included on page nine, 23, sort of the, the history of the cash in lieu, a chart of that. And I think what I mentioned a couple of weeks ago is that cash in lieu is quite different than your typical system development fee, and that it does fluctuate. Sometimes it fluctuates quite extremely, which is what's happening now, which is very similar to what happened in the 1999 timeframe. And in fact, what's happening now is less of a percentage change than happened then. Nonetheless, it's, it's happened before. So staff has, has looked at, looked at that, we provided in the communication some information. One thing I do want to point out, too, is that the percent of, of the deficit that's being made up by cash, it's, it's shown on page 925 of the packet. It, really since 2005, it's been all of 20 acre feet. And the reason for that is that most people are going out and buying other nonhistoric water. A lot of it is Lake Macintosh water and those kinds of things. The reality is, is all water is probably going up. And so whether they're paying cash, or whether they're going out and trying to buy raw water, it's probably all escalating. So this, the staff, we gave you several options under, under council options, we also gave you some additional options. If you don't believe this is the time to, to move it to that, what, what the market looks like, the value is. I would suggest one additional thing, and I know it's late tonight, but if the Water Board, or, excuse me, or City Council, if the City Council decides to approve the Water Board recommendation, I think you could do that also with the caveat that Water Board and staff look at the policies and, and look at additional criteria that could be considered going forward when setting the fee in the future. Because I do believe there are other things that we can consider without necessarily throwing out CBT entirely. So with that, I'll take questions, and Ken Houston is here, if you've got really hard questions.
Councilmember Farrow?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. What I would like to do, and what I think we should do, is postpone this item and have you bring back some of those other options that we can use, because I think this increase is too high. I, and I want to see other options. You know, this was a great policy when we were growing by leaps and bounds, but we're not anymore, and we need to look at how much water do we need at build-out, which we're gonna be at pretty soon, and, and do we have enough, and how much is enough, and how much more do we need, and how, I think we need to look at the whole policy and perhaps adjust it. So I would like to postpone this and maybe have you come back with some, some other information, additional information, so we can make better decision. It is a motion.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thanks, Mayor. I was, it's late, so I couldn't articulate it like that, because my question was, why didn't you, usually there's a recommendation, and so what that tells me is exactly what you said, so let's vote, and I'll vote with you.
Councilmember Levison?
One of our breaks, I was in the hallway talking to Ken. This, if, if, if we want to, we can do the, the recommendation from the Water Board, and they review it, what, every three months?
So-
It can be every month.
Every month, so-
Minimum of every three months.
So I don't think that, I mean, in the possibility, the water prices, we're really in a drought situation now, water prices are going up. Why would we set a fee for our water that might be artificially low in a interim period, while we might be taking that longer look that Councilmember Finley wants to take? And maybe, you know, who knows, end up with a price where it's undervalued on the market, and that's my concern. And if the Water Board's reviewing this every month, maybe what we should do is vote this now, and then say, we'd like the Water Board to hear what the other criteria staff's suggesting, and have them review it first, and then bring it to us. Or we can have a joint discussion with Water Board around the criteria, because they're experts, I mean, all the Water Board people have to have expertise to be on the Water Board, too. Right. Right. Well, so what I would suggest is, there's no skin off our back to just do the approval of the resolution now, as opposed to holding up the price, and we can still have the criteria looked at by Water Board and our body.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. When Water Board met about this, they asked for a way to try to get this in front of us quickly, but I don't think they, and that's their meeting, and I allowed them to have their discussion. But when I talked to you about it, you and I talked about options, that there might be other options. They didn't talk about options. And that's a very good idea. So I, that's why, you know, I'm one of the seconds, so I think that's a valid point. The Water Board didn't have that discussion. Again, I'm the liaison, it's their meeting, they need to have their discussions, they didn't ask my opinion. They asked my opinion, how to get it in front of us. So it's, but I would agree with that 100%. We need to have, see some options, and this isn't an option.
And Mayor and council, I, I think we can get back to you with some of these options in short order. I don't think it's gonna be that long of a timeframe. If not within 30 days, we're gonna be able to do it in 45 days, so that, that information is in front of you. And again, that timeframe of whether you adjust tonight or not is, is, I don't think dispositive of the city being at a huge risk with regards to either over or under rallying of the water.
Okay, I guess we got a motion. Let's vote on Bonnie's motion. Okay, passes six to one with Councilmember Levison descending. I guess for council and Mayor Streetworth. All right. Oh, we got final call, public invited to be heard, is there anybody like to come and speak?
Brad Jolly, 2213 Spinnaker Circle, Longmont. This shouldn't take more than 45 minutes or so, Mayor and council, I appreciate your time. The solution is obvious, we simply need to move Dillard's to where the apartments are, and move the apartments over to the mall, and I think that should solve everything. We learned a few things tonight from, from Mr. Ginsborg. One, he knew that about the Dillard's situation since 2010, but he never made an offer more than 2.85 million until at least January of this year. The 3.03 million is only the real estate value, okay? It does not include the value of Dillard's rights, which are obviously substantial. And so for Mr. Ginsborg to never go over 2.85 million until January of this year strikes me as, as inappropriately low as negotiating position. These rights must be substantial, because as Mr. Samori pointed out, the city and Dillard's offered, what, 5.56 million, I believe, was the number used already. Now, if Dillard's wants 5 million, why, you know, why doesn't that work? And the answer is, the thing won't 5 million today, is my understanding. And the 5.56 is spread out with the balloon payment a couple of years after the mall is redeveloped, I believe is how he described it. And so what we're really arguing over is the, the time value of the money, okay? It's really what this is. And so, as I look over this august body, I'm very disappointed in everybody except for Councilwoman Levison. Thank you for taking the principal stand there. I'm reminded of a, a famous story involving Sir Winston Churchill. Perhaps you're familiar with it, I won't bore you with the whole thing. But the punchline that applies here is, we've established what you are, now we're simply haggling over the price. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else that could come speak?
Paul Tiger, 634 Main Street. Hopefully, in the next few days, unless, of course, I'm eminent domain for an off-ramp for the internet or something like that. Really, I, I watched for the past couple of years, Panatoni had New Mark Merrill come in, and New Mark Merrill encouraged tenants of the mall to depart. They did so in a variety of ways. My optometrist was in there for years, one of the first folks to be in there. And they would not renew his lease, and they would tell him that he could only rent month to month, and people wanting more surety about where their businesses were going to be, moved out. They were told that there was going to be a blight designation. Before, there was a blight designation, and then there was a blight designation, and then New Mark Merrill was able to buy the mall from Panatoni, actually at, at auction, at, at a reduced price. Everything that I've seen so far from New Mark Merrill is disingenuous, and they're going to take us down the path with them. A TIF, which was recently renewed on the mall, and so we have all this money going towards the TIF, and yet, we're now going to say, oh, well, we incentivize these people to come and build this business, and then we're going to yank the rug out and say, oh, well, we're now going to eminent domain that. So, let me ask you, which big box is invited by that action? Which one wants to come here to Longmont and get involved with us, and get in the TIF, and get in the new mall, and that we might say 10 or 15 years from now, you know what? We're gonna do it again, because we don't like what's here, and we're gonna change it up. There was a gentleman here on the council who said that he wanted to go to the mall. Let him pay for it. Thank you.
Sir, anybody else would like to come speak? Final call, public invited to be heard. Seeing no one, I'll close. Final call, public invited to be heard. So it's time for Mayor and council comments. Is there any council comments? Councilmember Finley?
I have a long one. It's not really that long, it's really very short. As several council members are aware, there have been a couple of meetings with local builders and developers to discuss how to improve the complex and inconsistent requirements they're trying to operate under. And I'd like to thank our staff members who have attended these meetings, although I'm sure it's not their favorite thing to do. As we proceed to make adjustments to simplify the system, there is a policy question I'd like us to address this evening. Private residential developments are required to construct private pocket parks and trails for recreational needs of its residents. We've seen that tonight. I think this is a fine idea, however, they're, they are still required to pay the full park fee, and this is a redundant cost and an onerous one for many of our local developers who, who do build things that don't look like cookie cutters. Therefore, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to conduct research and return to city council with findings and options to amend the land development code to reduce the residential park fee assessed per residential unit in the amount equal to the cost of private developer, that the private developers must pay to construct required parks and trails as required by the land development code or annexation agreements within the next 60 days, or bring back some other options that we can look at, at that time. And until that time, I'd like to see us take a timeout in collecting those park fees until a fair assessment can be made.
Can you repeat it, Bonnie? I'm sorry.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
No, can I? First of all, it hasn't been seconded, but I want to jump in and say, we are currently undergoing a- Our, yes, and I think that, although I like your idea, I don't want to do it right now, because, number one, it's after midnight, number two, I think that it, we need to put it in context with the Parks and Open Space Master Plan Review Process, which we are going to do, but, so I don't want to do this yet. That's just what I'm saying.
Can I answer that? The Parks and Master Plan that we are going to look at doesn't include pocket parks or trails that these developers are required to build, and it has- trails that these developers are required to build, and it has nothing to do with the amount of money they have to pay for those things. Or the park fees, but they do. It has to do with the park fees, but not the money they pay for parks that they have to maintain. And this motion only asks for staff to bring back their recommendations in looking at this.
But she also said that you would stop electing.
Not any fees, just the fees that would come in, which, you know, given our current development, wouldn't be a whole bunch.
Could you give us some time to think about it?
Time...
Don't make a decision on this right now.
The only reason I bring this up is that some of our local builders really have found this onerous. These are the same builders that hire local folks to do work. They need some relief, and I was hoping we could do it in a timely manner and with some alacrity. But it, and I understand it's late. So I understand that you're too tired to do that now, but I think it should be addressed.
Could you email us? Could you email us that motion? And then we'll address it like at nine next week.
Harold, could we, Anna, on this?
So we are going to discuss the master, we are bringing the master plan to Council next week. And so what I hear is two different items in this. And I hear, so let's take the first one. The first one is to bring back options where we look at this. The other item was the collection of the existing fees. So what I would say is, I hear you getting hung up on the latter, on the collection of the fees and the options. What I'm at least sensing is okay with us developing the options. And so what we can do is, from a staff perspective, is we can start work, if it's Council's desire on the options, and looking at different perspectives. And then you all can consider the other option, if you wish, either tonight or, you know, next week or a later date. So what we're saying is, is we can take the options of the part fee and how it's applied and start working on that.
Okay.
But it's late. It's late.
Councilmember Levison.
Yes. Let's see. Trying to remember what I was thinking. I know Jeff Freezer's in the audience, and there was a piece of information in our packet around having a beer tent at, actually, Jeff, would you please come down at Rhythm on the River? I said Jeff to me.
So Jeff.
I meant to say Jeff. Sorry. Thank you for correcting me. Thank you for correcting me. Then, you know, I'm not really convinced. I know Councilmember Bagley jumped all over the land development code and micro distilleries and micro breweries and the land development. Not tonight, you didn't. He was really, really good. But he made me think a little bit more about this idea of having Rhythm on the River have a beer tent, and also knowing what, how the community appreciates, for example, that Cinco de Mayo is, in Longmont, is an alcohol-free, tobacco-free, family-oriented event. I think we need to take a little harder look at Rhythm on the River, because, first of all, you know, it's going to be summer, and it's going to be extremely hot. And I think I read somewhere, and correct me if I read it somewhere, it wasn't related to your communication, that there would be a two-beer limit on people, or would, you know, I'm just concerned with the heat that we get for Rhythm of the River, and how easy it is to down cold beer, and dehydration, and everything else, that, you know, we may have some additional risk involved and liability through alcohol sales or beer sales. And it might make it less of a family-friendly event. And that event has been very well-attended by families, and I just want to make sure that the nature of the event does not change. So can you explain to me how this proposal will not change the nature of the event?
Mayor, members of Council, Jeff Freezer, Recreation Manager. I think that, based on the success we've had, we being Recreation and the DDA in the downtown concerts, I think we've demonstrated that we can have family events, serve alcohol, and really not have a problem with intoxication. I'm not saying that that isn't a possibility, especially in the scenario that you described where it's warmer. What we have done with the downtown concerts is limited people to drinks that's marked on their bands, so that we can tell when they've had that. It's really a consideration we're talking about now. Because of the duration and the type of an event, I don't know that we could limit it to two if it's over an eight-hour period, but that's certainly something that we could do. One of the things that we're doing, based on the setup of the event, is trying to do all of the youth or kids-specific activities will be moved to the upper or the south end of the Grove. Kids will be allowed in the area where alcohol will be sold, but we will not have activities specific for them. So they would be able to come in to where the, what I'll call the prairie stage or the stage down below next to the food area. They would, of course, be allowed to do that. But that whole lower area of the event would be fenced off, and alcohol would be only allowed in that area. So it is larger than a tent like you described. It is, it would be the whole lower end of the event.
I guess I have some concerns, because the, it seems like the control and the checks, when we're looking at the downtown concert situation, it's not 10,000 people. It's like maybe 1,000, 2,000 people. And it's much easier for somebody who might have issued the wristband to someone to recognize that person who might have just brought scissors, cut it off when they've reached their limit and go back. Because, you know, I just, I was just a little bit uncomfortable with not seeing enough of the strategy of how we're going to, you know, keep that event, kind of the fun summer festival event. And that was my concern, Jeff. And that's, and you said in the communication, bring it up tonight or forever hold your peace. And so that's why I was glad to see you stuck it out here. Thank you.
And just for the record, we are on the docket to have our alcohol permit reviewed in May. So if Council would give direction tonight to not move forward in that, we would remove that application.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I'm going to like to make a motion now. As a result of outstanding performance and service to the City of Longmont over the past year, I move that we award City Manager Harold Dominguez a 5% bonus in the amount of $8,750 and an increase of base pay of 4% in the amount of $7,000, therefore requesting human resources to process this action effectively April 15, 2013. Okay. Need further discussion, or you guys want to vote? All right, let's vote.
I don't know. Usually, it gets out here early. I try to chase my plans.
Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Good job, man.
Any other? I don't see any other Council comments, so City Manager, any?
Mayor, Council, I know it's late. One of the items that we were actually going to bring up in the City Manager section was the discussion on Rhythm on the River, so it seems like that discussion's occurred. Also wanted to call your attention to the fact that there was, in the Information Section, there was information on the human service funding that Council requested in terms of an updating where we are. Karen is here, and she can talk to that issue if you would like. If not, we just wanted to point that out, that it is included in the packet.
Actually, I would just like Karen to come. I was going to ask about that, too, but it was late. But as you mentioned it, could you ask Karen to come down and just give a quick overview? And I know there was some concern, I read in the notes, that we would have this process ready for the 2013 grant cycle. Can you explain how we're going to fit that in, please, Karen?
Yes. Karen Roney, Community Services Director, Mayor and City Council. So it's tight, but we're good. So on the second page of the communication, we do outline the schedule, so that we really have started now working with a consultant to help us with the data collection, and that's the analysis of the secondary data. And we do plan to have that completed by mid-June. And that also then allows us to, right after that, is to engage in the community involvement phase. So once we have the data that says here are the greatest needs in our community and some of the trends looking forward, that we should be able to, you know, then run the community involvement process through July and be able to come back to Council in mid-August. That is our plan, to get your direction in terms of what our focus areas are going to be, and roll out the, make the modifications in the application, and be ready to go, release applications by September 3. So these are not, there'll be parallel processes happening, so that we will have probably three things moving at once to get it done. So our plan is to get it done according to the schedule, unless you want to give us some different direction about what we've outlined here.
Councilmember Levison.
Karen, I just want to be sure that the human service agencies that we've contracted with before are fully aware of not only the process, but when the interim reports happen, to make sure that they're alerted that the information is being developed, and this is what the first phase and second phase. Because what I heard the last time, that maybe we, they weren't as in tuned with the communication we were sending them, and being, you know, discriminating recipients of saying, well, yeah, we're going to make some changes, but people weren't paying much attention. I just want to make sure people pay attention, and there's no big surprises. Thanks.
Well, it would be great to have people pay attention. But we did send a copy of this communication to, you know, to all the agencies that we fund. I'm talking about this at the Same Brain Community Council on April, whatever the fourth Tuesday in April is. So we are doing our best to keep that, our group of agencies, informed about what will be happening and how they will be involved. So, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Any other remarks?
Sandy wants to talk really quick about the hackathon.
A very brief shout-out. This weekend, the first-ever Longmont Hackathon, starting at 6 o'clock, Friday night, Skyline High School. We're going to start with Mayor Protem Gabe Santos giving us a keynote address and giving our code folks in a place where they can create some awesome civic apps. So they'll be coding all day Saturday. And then for those of you who are joining us on Sunday to help create the Council Choice Awards, we'll be doing that judging. I think we start those presentations at 1 o'clock on Sunday. So thanks for joining us. Anyone who hasn't signed up, we right now have about 30 folks that are actually coders, and then we have another 10 or 20 different volunteers, lots of people just interested in looking. We did get three trending shout-outs this last week, including some video shout-outs from GovGirl and some other, some pretty hot websites. So just want to say that there. First hackathon this weekend. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. City Attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
All right, this meeting's adjourned.